No, but I thought when we hired Sophie that the staff did get to talk to her independent of the town council.
We did.
See?
Department heads did?
Uh, no, we, there was a, like, a committee.
Yeah.
It wasn't all the department heads. So what we did was we, there was more than one candidate, so I think we had, like, three groups that interviewed and gave tours. Yeah.
See?
Well, you're not a department head, so you don't go, you don't get invited to meetings.
Right, right.
Oh.
Yeah, 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 it was a department, it was a department, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's not staff.
Not everybody, alright.
Yes, that's true. We got, we did-
I know, people think I, I know a lot more about what's going on than I do.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sometimes I'm like, I just, I never heard of that, nobody told me.
We did, we did get to ask questions of the interviewees, and there was more than one.
Yeah. Good.
Yep.
Is this an extra packet?
Oh, yes, you brought it, okay. Yes, I brought it.
Did I, I'm like, I'm going crazy.
No, 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 you're not, you're not.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
And the one that you got home, did it have this one?
Yes, it did.
The dog bone and everything?
Yeah, or, or there were two of them in mine, that's, that's what it was. So that's why I gave back an extra one.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yes, yes. Hello, how are you? Good, good.
I thought, like, I gave back the little last one too, but it's just you and I over there.
It's, yes, it's, no, no.
Where is everybody?
Yeah.
Woo!
I know, the car, the lot is empty.
Yeah.
They'll come. Oh, it is six.
It helps, I know.
Wow.
The climate board is always fashionably late.
Well, Sam, I understand.
What's happening?
But, it's, yeah, children, please.
Rosemary, if you, if you were alone, you would excuse, I think, just because he's a man.
Oh, no, 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 I would excuse women too, absolutely. Putting children down at that hour, or, or, you know, no, that's like, well, yeah. Oh, I have a grandchild now, so I, I empathize completely.
You're a great husband.
Yes. Yes. Oh, absolutely, but I've been in the, that, and, just vacationed with them, and, oh my gosh.
It's gonna be coming up that you think it might be useful to keep it, just so that you can review it, about things we already discussed.
And do you, I think I'm gonna start, I still have my, my packet.
That's amazing, 'cause I, I thought they even held our mail, he had it all wrapped up, and I was like, oh, maybe-
I wonder if I should start this, just to, uh-
Hmm, that's odd.
So, do you want envelopes and paper clips back and stuff like that?
Recording in progress.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome to bring it back, Rosemary, bring some, I'll take your packet. But usually if you have it, the staff, it's okay. No, but anyone that doesn't, which has a different address on their book.
Anybody in?
We, we gotta hold back the crowds. Good, good, how are you? Yeah, have a boat for sale out front?
Yes, if you wanna keep it.
I think it's all-
Really? Very good.
It's not mine, my buddy's.
Okay. Wow.
Ended up with two boats.
Wow, yeah, 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 nice, that's great.
Yep.
Uh-huh. Oh, nice, 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 nice.
But they can't hear us.
No, they can't. No, not really.
Right.
Start the meeting.
Right, 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 wow, nice. Well, you're in prime real estate, you know, to- Oh, wow. Dean, oh.
Hi, David.
Yeah. They love, they love that, you know, there's a whole, my son-in-law has, has this website of, or blog about old cars, and that's, he loves pickup trucks.
Oh, you're good, working on it.
Oh, great, good.
Yep.
Oh, good, oh, nice.
Was used to that.
Ah, that's an easy-
Hi, David, and hello, anyone from home? We are just waiting for people to arrive, um, we'll just start the meeting briefly. David, can you hear us?
I can hear you, Cecilia.
Excellent, thank you so much for joining from away. I will mute myself till we start the meeting.
You can leave it, I'm muted for now.
Sorry. I'm always, like, worried that people are gonna log in from home, and then, thank you to Zoom isn't working, if we don't start it.
Right.
And I'm like, oh, it's-
I know, this is unusual, okay. These celebrations.
Get your phone if I wanna text you.
Oh, yeah, I should actually mute my phone, this is really unusual.
It is.
I think I got you in here, let me check. Do you? And put fire on there too. Send you group text. So, if you need assistance.
So, is the planning board meet again to review all the-
No, we did a workshop.
Workshop.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. Last Thursday.
Yeah.
Do you think Carol will have everybody tonight, or not sure?
We have everyone.
Will, will you have everyone on the board tonight?
Yes, we should, I mean-
Except for the, the remote, yeah.
Yeah, there's somebody that's remote, and there's something that's missing.
Oh, we could go last, so I'll stay then.
Yeah.
I think, wait, four people, we could officially start.
Okay, you have company, Sam, you're not alone.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I know, there's a lot of people.
Thank you.
Before you guys start, I noticed that, like, at the last meeting, I had a hard time with, um, thinking about how I would, like, move in order, so I did do the Cliff Notes, which will hopefully help a little bit.
Yeah.
That paper is, I'll have to send it to David.
Although we don't have any potential motions tonight.
No, 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 that's just so-
But it's good to, mm-hmm.
I mean, going forward, it should be the first page in the binding, right?
Right.
Or maybe the first page right before the comp plan, so you can flip through the comp plan.
Right, and then, yes.
I just saw Mitch.
Yep. Yeah, he went to get water.
And then-
Wayne, and-
Yeah, Wayne, I think Dave is on, yep, there's Dave, he's on the internet.
Oh, okay.
I can hear him.
There's some noise.
Thank God for cellphone cases.
Are we live there?
I know, their resistance is incredible.
We're not on yet. Okay. So, you wanna go when Mitch comes back?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Probably be waiting for him to come back.
Dropped my stack of papers on my way out the door.
Oh.
Of course, and like, got it returned, and everything was, not too bad, I guess the agenda's still on top, so it's a win.
How are you, Sam?
No Wayne today?
How are you?
No Wayne.
Yeah, Wayne's away.
Okay.
Wayne's away.
Wayne's away.
Sorry, I, I did-
It's poetic.
At least we know, I was just in shock. Nobody's here.
All right, it is my pleasure to call to order the Wednesday, May 1st, meeting of the Freeport Planning Board, it's a few minutes after 6:00. We will dive right in with item number one, which is an information exchange. First up is an update on the status of current and future planning board projects. Cecilia, do you wanna take it away on this one?
Okay, so, you know, we're pretty busy, um, the town council will have a public hearing, and here on the VC, uh, sorry, the VC1 height amendment that you recommended, that will be May 7th, um, they seemed pretty supportive of it, so, and there was also, you know, a little bit of questions about maybe even, some interests seemed to be demonstrated about maybe even going higher than the 45 feet. I think that will be a good conversation to have when we have, do the design review overlay.
Very much so, yep.
Revamp, um, and also, I just thought I would point out to you that the 35 limit, I mean, the 45 with the three-story limit is also part of the, Village Commercial 2 and 3 districts, they also have that limitation, just in thinking about the town area, um, so, and most other than areas of town is 35 feet, including the Village Mixed Studios district, so that's also sort of close to the downtown core, so just, I know we don't have a table that shows all the heights, and you kinda have to scroll around, but just pointing that out. Um, the design review RFP, the deadline for the request for proposals to hire the consultants closes tomorrow. As far as I know, we haven't gotten any, um, nobody dropped off any, um, proposals, um, but the deadline is tomorrow, and oftentimes people deliver on person, so hoping we'll get a few. Once again, like, we will follow that same kind of similar procedure as we did for the comp plan, and we'll have the chair and vice-chair of the planning board, and project review board as part of the selection committee. We're hoping to select somebody pretty quickly, once we go through the applications, so that they can start the work in June.
Is there a timetable for that?
Yes, it's right on the RFP, I think, was it?
For, for our involvement, I'm being selfish here.
Yeah, I think-
I have a fishing trip coming up.
Sure, I think, once the applications are delivered, I think we're hoping to start going through them, like, next week, and then start the interview, I mean, it's gonna be all happening hopefully this month, so, um, if you could wait until June to the fishing trip?
I can't. Sounds like the sort of trip that has been planned for us.
Yes, planned, but it, so that week before Memorial Day is a bad week for me.
Okay.
Which may be the week you wanna use, but-
Well, yeah, we, I mean, so typically that would be Mitch and me, right, you're the vice-chair, right? So, um, the, yeah, and I, but I punted the comp plan selection process, so, I mean, there's, you know-
I can punt too, I understand.
Right, there's, yeah, I know you wanna do it, but, yeah.
Let's see how the timing goes, I wanna do it, but if we can't-
That's why we scheduled May 13th as when we'd be looking at doing interviews, so we scheduled it before your fishing trip.
That would be perfect.
It's right in the RFP, actually. Mitch Ruda will be on a fishing trip, this, yeah.
That's right.
So, don't-
David, did you hear that?
Got it.
Um, okay, so, next month on June 5th, I'm sorry, are there any other questions about that? Okay, so next month, um, if you, we're probably gonna have a couple of public hearings, um, one of them will be for some updates that we need to do for zoning map, and it's just a reference to the FEMA new flood maps, the one, the reference that we have now is for a 1985 map, so they have updated it, and the town wants to keep on the good side of FEMA, so that people still qualify for flood insurance, so we'll be looking to go, jump right into a public hearing to that. There might also be some amendments to the shoreline zoning ordinance, but-
Okay, so that's gonna go straight to hearing without, we don't have to discuss it next week, right?
Yeah, so if any of you know that you might not be able to make it to that meeting, let us know, so that we can make sure we have, like, a quorum. There is kind of a deadline that the town's trying to meet, to stay compliant.
So we have, 'cause I know we have the June, we have the June 12th, right?
That's the workshop for the comp-
It's the workshop, right, which is very important, as a public outreach, and then the regularly scheduled meeting is the 5th, right?
Yeah.
And then, we don't have a second meeting, other than the workshop that month, right?
Right.
Okay.
So far, yes, hopefully.
Just wanna make sure, yeah.
Quite intense.
We've got two meetings in-
Well, so we have, so we have the meeting this, tonight, obviously, and then next week, right, is the, for the chapter review, and then we have June 5th is, sounds like we'll have some public hearings, potentially for stuff that we talked about tonight, in addition to the FEMA, um, the map-
Flood insurance map.
Amen, or map reference update, I think, right, it's fair to say, and then, June 12th is the public workshop, which will be at the library. I really should know that, I'm sorry.
No.
It's the Freeport Community Center.
Community Center, sorry, Community Center, next week is at the library, okay, yep, I mixed it up.
Next week, we'll be having that comp plan workshop to go over those last, last chapters, and that will be at the library, so-
Okay, that's at the library.
Don't show up here, 'cause we won't be-
I gotta remember that.
Yeah. Yep.
And then in June, we'll have a regularly scheduled meeting, and then, you know, a public workshop, which will hopefully have, be fun, and have some presentations with the consultants, about the comp plan.
So many free pens, um, okay.
So-
And then, do we have, is there any, have we heard anything, Caroline, since you're sitting right there, about the, the grant that you applied for, for, no?
No, we should hear, um, probably any week, I think it was like eight weeks before we appear, so we're gonna do it.
Okay, okay, cool.
David, did you hear that? Okay, good, all right.
And that was just for, anyone watching who doesn't, has no idea what we're talking about, that was a question about the, the town, or Caroline and Sophie worked together to apply for a grant to fund a clean, a round of ordinance cleanup and permitting, with an eye toward permitting, streamlining permitting. Is that fair to say, so?
Yeah, it was a kind of focus on housing, so we had flagged money to focus on cleaning up 602 site plan review. Opportunity came up for the grant to further housing opportunities, and ordinance work could come under that, so it seems like a good time to piggyback on that with overhaul of subdivision ordinance, 'cause we have some outdated performance standards in there. And then, once everything was cleaned up, and based upon all the LD 2003 stuff you did, we would work on a multimedia marketing campaign to promote different types of development, and focus on housing opportunities in Freeport. The grant application did have a municipal funding match, because we already had some funding, but of the $50,000 requested, 20 of that is for multimedia marketing, to promote all types of housing opportunities, and of course, some of that would be other development as well.
Awesome. All right, anything else under sub-item number one? Cecilia, or is that the?
Um, no, and of course, you might be, we might be having public hearings for some of the items that we're discussing today at the next, on the June meeting.
All right, sub-item two is a report of items reviewed by the PRB, Project Review Board.
Yes, so I can give that report, although I wasn't at the meeting, but Caroline's here if you have any questions, but we have L.L.B. for the April 17th Project Review Board meeting, L.L.B. got an approval for their 95 Main Street for a design review certificate and site plan amendments for that. I believe this was for the Phase 2 alterations to their flagship campus, there'll be some demolition and a lot of alterations with the parking and pedestrian circulation on the property, um, so they are moving forward with that. The Freeport Conservation Trust also got a site plan approval for a new parking area, just for three cars at Flying Point Road. Petrillo Food Co- Company got a site plan amendment for a peddler cart at their property at 115 Main Street. I guess you need a site plan approval for that, and then there was also a site plan amendment for, to add a boat storage, an existing boat yard at 33 Allen Range Road. That was it.
Great. Update on the Housing Task Force recommendation to the town council.
Okay, I guess that's fine, so, um, you guys know that the task force has put together a list of priority recommendations, I think we've reviewed them a bunch of times here, they basically fall into a bunch of categories, zoning-related, TIF-related, financing-related. That was, we were asked to, that was presented to the council, I guess, two or three meetings ago, they asked us to prioritize, we prioritized. And there is a chart that, I don't know if was distributed to you guys, but if not, the-
Yeah, I can distribute the chart, I-
I would distribute the chart, because the chart was kind of our final work of, and it was put in priority order.
Okay.
The council then distilled that to this document, that was presented to the council last week, and it puts the, sort of a point on three different action items, the first one being to enable greater density in Village Commercial 1, VC1, and that has a whole bunch of pieces to it, one of which is the three-story thing that we did last week, the second one is raising the height altogether. A third one is allowing multifamily, well, and that won't affect VC1, but allowing multifamily in all commercial zones, so, a bunch of, a bunch of that. That was the first priority, the second priority was to build our, our database, our data inform our decisions, and, you know, we, I wanted to bring up that we had a conversation with the, with North Star at the housing thing about, they had done an inventory, and I said, I, I remember having a discussion about, is there more inventory work that could be done, is there other data that's available that they haven't collected, particularly on the size of both rentals and, and for-sale homes, and, so that's priority two, is to do that. Now, if North Star is gonna do more of it, and I think they went away saying they would do more of it, it'd be interesting to know what they're gonna do, but hold that thought till, well, because this all leads to a resolution that was adopted by the council to go forward with this, and to fund it with staff time and, and capital, if necessary, capital expensive necessary, and they have an intern that is prepared to do a whole lot of inventory work, and some path, John Egan certainly has some pathways on where to find that data, but I, I just wanna make sure they're not being duplicative to North Star, so somebody-
You can add to that once you get through the list.
Okay, good, and then the third one was to establish two other, I don't know if they're really task forces, but two other work streams, one around what, what's been called the Dog Bone Working Group, so that's, that idea of creating a different zoning area that extends from downtown along Route 1 all the way to Main Beer, and then expands a little bit at Main Beer Company to, you know, there's a bunch of vacant land there that would all be included in this transit-oriented district, so, one group is supposed to work on that, and the other is supposed to work on TIF financing and TIF rules, because we have TIF rules that come from 2010, and so these two things sort of go together, one is sort of the zoning implications of it, and the other is the, the tax financing of it. So that's what they want us to go forward with, they formed a resolution, which I have somewhere here, but the point is that, you made me-
Included in the packet.
It's included in the package, and that was approved, so I think that is running down the track. I'm pleased about it, there is a whole lot of sort of second-tier stuff, and a lot of it, the one question I have is, things like raising height limits, and we've talked about that, and whether, you know, it needs public discussion, but assuming that that was something we wanted to go forward with, or at least, you know, bring forward, and assuming it was, would this have to wait, I mean, what, should everything be done incrementally? Or is there, or is this part of the comp plan, and then the comp plan informs a change, you know, I'm, I'm wondering how much you can bite off when, and what's the right staging?
I think that's a great question, yeah.
I mean, at this point, I think it'd be interesting to have the design review overhaul process, because most, I think, of these discussions, or where the dog bone is, is on the area that we already have the downtown plan for.
Yep.
And is the area that the design review district is in, and we're expecting to have, you know, community conversations, not specifically, nothing official in that term, but having community involvement in terms of providing feedback with the design review overlay ordinance.
I think it has more to do with the comp plan than the design review, but-
In a sense it does, but I also think that there, if we get a really clear sense from the community that there's buy-in for these sorts of changes, I don't see it as strictly necessary to wait for the comp plan to be totally packaged up to take on some of these things, I think it's very clear that increasing housing supply is part of the existing comp plan too, and so, from my perspective, if there's consensus, and if everybody on this board and other, you know, whoever else is, cares to raise their voices, I mean, I, I don't see that as a particular hurdle, and I think that if there's community consensus there, then the comp plan should reflect that same consensus, so-
Then the question is simply, at what point do we attempt to build, or at least, community consensus, or at least get the sense of the-
I think it's, I think it's with, as soon as we have selected, I mean, it's part, I think, I see it as part of the, the design review process, which I think is gonna sort of run ahead of the comp plan a little bit, I mean, I, Caroline's giving me a slight side eye.
Yeah, I somewhat disagree with the way the conversation's going, sorry.
It's okay.
Do you wanna go through the list, and then I can comment?
I'm done, I'm done, I'm done, comment on the hall.
Generally speaking, and we won't get too involved, we are working on a list of all the stuff we already have before the planning board. Obviously, the comp plan is a big lift, there's also a lot of ordinance work and cleanup, things resulting from state mandates that we need to be focusing staff time on, the council did take the recommendations of the housing committee, and they took action to what they are setting priorities, which was that narrative, so those are the priorities as they reference the planning board. We'll look for volunteers to be involved in those, they didn't fast-track the other recommendations to the planning board at this point in time, so I think we'll need to get clarity how those should be-
What does that mean, track? You mean, they-
They didn't say, hey, planning board, work on everything on the table, they said, okay, have all these things, as a community focusing board and staff resources on, they picked their four, one of which you hopefully already did at the last meeting.
At least part of.
Yeah, so I think we need to get clarification as to, you know, the overall work plan, if you guys should be taking up the other ones right now, 'cause we also have a climate action plan with a huge list of planning board things on the horizon. As far as the height, we did talk about the height surrounding downtown a couple years ago, a couple of you are here, and people didn't wanna raise the height outside of VC1, they wanted to keep it 35 feet, we got pushback, we may get-
You mean, inside VC1 or outside?
Outside, why, that's why we only changed VC1 to three stories or 45 feet, because we looked at all the VCs, and it was a no-go from the community. So I think if we are going to do that, it is an important comp plan conversation, I think we might get some sense from people with design review for height, but height is a zoning ordinance provision, so I see that, although we may take bits and pieces of the process, our feedback from that design review process, to me, that really is kind of a separate track and a separate project, because design review cannot increase the height, if that makes sense.
Ah.
'Cause that numerical restriction-
Won't touch the issue at all, well-
Yeah, the numerical restriction is what there's some interest in.
Yeah, I mean, I see, I, I think that's a, that is an important distinction, is that the, the design review is not part of the zoning ordinance, it's a separate, right? It's a separate-
And height is a zoning issue.
And height is a zoning issue.
Right, I, I think-
I, I guess I still come down maybe more so than you do, Caroline, on like, if it's easy, and we're doing something anyway, and, and there's consensus to raise the height, I don't see, I mean, I don't see a reason to delay it necessarily, but-
Well, my guess is that the height would have to be raised in very, not across VC1.
Yeah, I don't-
Only in specific places.
Well, VC1 and VC2 is also 45 with that three-story.
I think some of the design review conversation could put up some flags, if we think that's something worth taking out of the list of priorities to fast-track, and I do think, if we get design review cleanup, then that's the time to look at height again, 'cause we have those-
Yeah, I guess, that's my only point, is I, I think, if there's an opportunity, I'm not opposed to taking it, I guess that's my-
Yeah, I, I just didn't want people listening to feel like design review is gonna change the height, because it's not, zoning would have to change the height.
Right, fair enough, but I think the conversation may inform changes to zoning, necessarily, I mean, honest, that's, that was a wrong word.
Draw attention to some things.
Yeah, yep.
To look at, but yeah, we can get some further clarification as to the other things on the table, and if those are something we wanna be prioritizing in front of the planning board, clearly, the council sent the four, oh, I know, the data, that's the other thing we talked about the last meeting. So I actually did reach out to John Egan today, and I was like, hey, where are you getting, what's this data that everyone thinks is easy to get? And so, his understanding is that it, Brunswick hired somebody, or worked with a local planning agency, and was able to extract the units and square footage from census data, so I've reached out to North Star to see if that's something they had the ability to do, and if it's something we have in the current scope of work for the comp plan, or if we would need to amend that, in which case I'd have to ask the council for money, which I think they probably would, because that was one of their priorities of the housing committee recommendations. The other option Brett and I had talked about is we have a lot of building permit data, because you can either do permit data or assessing data. In Freeport, we can- In Freeport, we cannot use, currently, we cannot use past assessing data to get an accurate kind of units and square footage. So, Brett and I had talked about having an intern look at the permit data in looking up the square footages and the number of units as an alternate way to get it, if North Star doesn't have access to generate-
Okay. As long as that's all coordinated, and we figure out what is gettable.
Yeah, so there's two options that we're kind of juggling with, and the intern starts next week.
The interesting thing is just to ask what did Brunswick do to get there? I mean, apparently, they have a lot of data there that they were able to collect.
Yeah, apparently, they do, and you said census. I didn't, from the conversation at the last one, it didn't sound like it was right at their fingertips, but we can poke around and reach out to whoever we need to reach out to.
Let's get a copy of what they have.
How they did it, yeah. And I guess I would wanna know, like, maybe they were able to do it, but for Freeport, can we do it, and is it accurate, would be the other.
Yes, I mean, I bet there's-
Well, I just think it will be very helpful, I mean, and this, a little bit gets, this is why, to me, the height issue is more of a comp plan issue, because that's, that is a zoning thing.
The comp plan, too, if I'm-
Is also not zoning.
If I'm not mistaken, the 2011 comp plan actually had one of the action items being, consider, you know, raising the height limit above 35 feet for certain areas of town.
Yeah, outside of the village.
I don't have it in verbatim, but I think, I think the current-
That's my only point, is like-
Yeah, I think you could look at it under the current comp plan outside of the village.
Yes, but I'm interested in the, in the public feedback, so then this becomes a herring that we just bring up, where we're gonna be in the middle of, what's the future of Freeport? And having community involvement, that's when somehow, in a very formal way, we should say, one idea is, what do you guys think?
One idea that you might be able to piggyback on is, so, we're waiting for a design review. If we have a proposal that we think is from a consultant that would be able to do what we want, or we envision, and we execute that, we anticipate that would be a six-months project. In between that six months, we are also gonna have a big fall community forum on housing with North Star as part of the comp plan, and that might be a way that you can get some additional feedback on the height issue.
I think it's also, I mean, height is kind of a necessary part of the conversation, even though it's governed under the zoning ordinance. Like, you can't talk about space, bulk, aesthetics without talking about height. I mean, if somebody says, well, I like the look of this building, I mean, how tall is that building, is a pretty important thing to get a sense for, so-
Could just make one more comment on this subject, and then, I don't know, we can go any farther, but I think if anybody tried to say, let's raise the height uniformly in VC One to 55 feet, it would not go over. I think it would have to be much more specific.
Yeah, I agree with that. All right, anything else for, on the housing task force, or?
No. I don't see any other questions.
Great. Item number two is a review of the minutes from the April 3 planning board meeting. That was just last month, so the minutes are very fresh. That's impressive. I can't remember another time when the minutes have been ready in time for the next meeting.
Well, this one was a shortened one, because we had to cancel.
That's true.
But there is just one thing that we, and I didn't notice this until after I printed, and I was putting it in envelopes, but we just have to change the heading. It says, Agenda Revised, and it should be minutes, but-
Yes. But, I think, aside from that, I mean, I like it, yeah, they were shorter than typical, it was typical, but it was a shorter meeting, so it's still very thorough, I had no-
I didn't even notice, Bonnie, Bonnie just picked something else. I didn't have time to proof it, but, yeah.
Page one, at the end of the first paragraph, it says, we are expecting councillor Arsenal, and he's-
Oh, he's a board member.
Maybe it's just Mr.
Mister. Former councillor.
And on page two, there's one typo.
Were you once a councillor?
President's forever.
Oh, okay.
They lock him up, I guess.
Sharon's been here forever.
Yeah, she has.
Do you wanna mention that one? There's, there's one typo there. Page two, there, it shouldn't be there, I think.
Oh, three. The, sorry, yep, there. How do we wanna deal with any of these, like, is it, we wanna just mark up one copy and send it to-
And give it to me?
Give it to Cecilia. Rosemary, do you have the most thorough? I saw one somewhere, but then I was like, moved on.
I underlined, so, it's not a very clean copy, but-
That's okay.
Because you guys are making changes, and you don't have a secretary tonight, maybe you should table this to the next meeting, so you can get it on record.
I move that we accept the minutes-
Yes.
And as amended by the documents that will be given to Cecilia tonight.
Can we do that?
Yes, Cecilia can make minutes from tonight's meeting to refer to that.
Cecilia, I just wanna point out that the spelling of my last name is incorrect, the E and the I are swapped. Not a big difference, but, mention it.
Okay, so, check. Thank you, David.
Where is that?
It's right up front.
It's right up front. Oh, wow. I would've made that mistake, too.
I before E, excepting-
Except after C, or when David Spears is-
Up at the C. Yeah.
Sorry, I often proof these, but I was out on vacation the week prior, so I just had to rush them through, but-
You do say Spears, though, right, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's throughout.
Yep. Well, that's easy, that's a fine replace. Okay, so, Cecilia, we're, you will get a sort of amended copy and put it into the record. And otherwise, if we approve as amended, I already heard a motion. Mitch, do you mind remaking that motion, or?
I, the motion is that we will, that we approve the minutes from the last meeting as amended, with typographical corrections being submitted this evening.
And I heard a second from Andrew, all in favor, except for Rosemary, who was not here.
Oh, right.
That passes. We saw, oh, we have to do a roll call vote, because Dave is-
Six to O.
Because Dave is up there. I know. All right, sorry. Dave, we're gonna do you first.
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Mitch?
Aye.
Votes aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Bonnie votes aye as well, so the motion passes. Great. Sorry, I forgot about that for a moment. Item number three is a discussion on proposed zoning ordinance amendments pertaining to cannabis cultivation facilities. This is an applicant-driven zoning amendment request. The applicant is Hazy Hill Farms LLC. Dave Stevenson is the applicant. And we're considering amendments which would allow, quote, "medical cannabis dispensary cultivation facilities" as an allowable use under the existing land use of medical cannabis cultivation facility. So, it's sort of a definitional addition, I guess you could say. Cecilia, do you wanna start us off with this, or do we wanna hear directly from the applicant?
Yeah, so, we reached out to the Office of Cannabis Policy, you know, when we were designing our cannabis zoning ordinance amendments. We were not really looking into so much the medical part. The main law can get pretty confusing, because you have both of them. So, to be honest, I really don't know what a dispensary is, so I'm hoping to learn a little bit from the applicant today. And also, then, you know, we will hopefully be hearing back from the Office of Cannabis Policy and getting some clarification. And, you know, we'll be looking forward to see, after tonight's discussion, if you need any other information to make a decision, they come back. And, yeah, and then also to note that whatever you decide, which we're not deciding today, because it's not a public hearing or anything, but you just have to make sure that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Great.
Well.
So, maybe the applicant could give us probably a better explanation of the rules than I could provide.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Good evening, board members. My name's David Stevenson. I live up in Durham, Maine, and I own 24 Noble Drive, and have operated there as a cannabis caregiver since 2016. Never really had any issues there, run a successful business in kind of a rocky marketplace as of late. You know, my, my business, or cannabis business, is kind of over-regulated and oversaturated in Maine, but I have been able to continue running a good business. We've won a number of awards. We are well-respected, and we're rule-abiding taxpayers, so. Essentially, what I'm here to ask is, in the definitions of cannabis establishments or licenses, one was left out, which is the one that I'm pursuing, which is a dispensary cultivation license. Now, although dispensary is in the name, I'm not looking to set up a store in Freeport, because I understand that Freeport is not open to that idea at this time. The license is essentially a medical commercial license, very similar to an adult-use or recreational cannabis license. Currently, we're operating as medical, but under caregivers. And as you know, Freeport recently came up with their own cannabis ordinance, and they are limiting that to, I believe, four or five applicants. And I currently, my wife and I are caregivers, and then two of our employees are also caregivers in that facility. And my plan was to move away from that model and try to apply for one of these cultivation licenses, which would just be less complicated, and it would also, we're also trying to open a medical store in Wells. Under the dispensary license, you're allowed to have two separate cultivation facilities and a storefront. So, I'm trying to kind of bring some of all these licenses that I'm managing under one entity, which is Hazy Hill Farm. And just to kind of go over what all the licenses are, there's caregivers, which essentially, each caregiver is limited to about 500 square feet of flowering canopy per caregiver, and, or 36 plants, or 30 plants, I believe. We typically go by square footage. The, the adult-use licenses, there's an adult-use cultivation that starts at, I think, like 2,500 square feet, and goes all the way up to 25,000 square feet. For the dispensary license, and there's a number of security requirements for both the dispensary license and the adult-use licenses, which include video cameras, you know, security system, panic buttons. So, it's a very secure location, probably overly secure, in my opinion, but that's good. I mean, it protects my assets. So, yeah, what else can I explain? So, yeah, there's up to 25,000 square feet in adult-use. There's no cap on dispensary licenses, but because Freeport has limited, you know, manufacturing buildings to 10,000 square feet, that basically limits the amount of cultivation I can do to like 6,000 or 7,000, and that, even then, would be pretty tight. I'm looking to do this also because half of my warehouse is under construction, I'm looking to expand into that space and use it, because I'm only using about half of my space in the building. And again, if I were to get this dispensary license, I've already applied for four caregiver licenses through the town, but I would only need one license if I were to have this commercial license. So, it really makes a lot of sense.
May I ask you a few questions?
Yes, please.
So, first of all, with the multiple caregiver licenses, you actually can have a relatively large space, right?
We can have, well, there's four of us, we can have 2,000 square feet.
2,000 feet.
But there's only four, I believe it's four applicants, or?
Is a cap on that?
On the, in the town. You're only taking four or five applicants total. There's already-
Your building.
And the town has grandfathered us in, or at least myself and my, myself and another caregiver in town, but the other operator that's been in town is also looking to do a dispensary license. So, we're-
Does anybody know the history of the limit of four?
I don't. So, that's one, that's a-
Part of the ordinance, and I can, I can probably find it.
But it's a, it's not zoning, that's a different, that's the ordinance committee.
Remember when we did, we did the zoning part, which was, we were gonna keep it separate from the licensing?
So, that's where, yeah, the licensing is separate from the land use regulations.
I understand this, but-
It is separate, and hot off the press was an amendment to the licensing ordinance. So, when the council created it, we knew we had two establishments that were already having operation, business operations in Freeport. So, they set four manufacturing licenses and four cultivation licenses, which the assumption was that covered the two existing establishments plus some. Well, it didn't, because there were multiple caregivers at these sites. So, at the last meeting, the council actually increased that. So, the town of Freeport now allows four manufacturing licenses, for which two have already been applied for, and they now allow six cultivation licenses, which should cover the known cultivators in Freeport that requires licenses. If we get more, there's two available, if we get more than that, it would go into a lottery, like you said, separate, but that's the background, and it just, the change just-
And the licenses don't have any size limitation?
The licenses do not. You guys put land use restrictions.
The land use controls it.
So, in some zones, you followed manufacturing and processing. So, in the zone, that David's facility is, and there's a 10,000 square foot maximum, but that's not in all zones.
That's for the MDA, MDB district, because we were kind of following the same standards that we thought were-
This is MDA, right?
I believe it's the-
Thank.
It's, yeah, one of them.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, I mean, right, I don't know who was on the board. Rosemary, you were definitely here. Mitch, you were here for this, right, when we did the cannabis stuff?
Yeah, but I just didn't remember about the licensing part.
Right, right, yeah.
Because we don't do it, yeah.
But I think, yeah, we, so we followed the, we, basically, we decided that the, the use as viewed from the outside, or sort of as viewed from a perspective of somebody in town who's coexisting with one of these, was very similar to a warehouse or manufacturing and processing. And so, that was what drove the land use considerations here, so.
And so...
I mean, and I would say that, that sort of drives my line of questioning here, which is quite a simple one, I think, which is like, what, is there any difference, or would there be any difference?
There'd be no difference. We're growing the same plants.
Yeah, there's no-
There's actually, there is a difference, and that's the increased, the dispensary license we require, increased security requirements, which probably everyone wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
I'm the one that has to bear that cost.
Yeah, and those, and it's probably similar to the security requirements that I think we put, that, I think they're written right into the land use guidelines, right, the, I mean, into the zoning ordinance, the security requirements.
Right, we were not differentiating for cultivation facilities, you know, between-
So, I think it, there's really very little-
The only difference that I'm asking is essentially to add in, under cultivation establishments, under the, in the, sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but in the definition of cannabis establishments, just adding in essentially that dispensary cultivation licenses are accepted, and it very, and what we drafted up was very specifically saying that we were not opening any sort of store, whether it's adult-use or Freeport. I'm trying to do the exact same thing I'm doing now, just under a slightly different license, that will be easier.
Well, you're trying to do four times as much of it, or three times as much.
Well, not four times, but two times.
But under one license, which makes perfect sense to me. I mean, I'm not, you know, I have a long history on the planning board, not, like, I'm not generally, I, let me put it this way, I'm glad that we don't have retail stores in Freeport, I think that's a good choice, I think it is a saturated market, I think people can go other, other places, but I also wanna support the businesses that we have in town, and I think that, you know, given that this has basically no impact to anyone, except for making a business owner's life easier in town, I'm totally fine with this. I think it's, I think it's, you know, well drafted, I don't have, you know, the technical expertise maybe that Caroline does to go through this, I think, but like, the explicit provision on a retail store that is in here tracks with everything we've talked about for my entire time on the planning board, and, and, you know, through at least a couple, few councils now, has been pretty consistent with that, so I really have no issue whatsoever with this. consistent with that. So I really have no issue whatsoever with this.
I'd just like to say, I really appreciate Freeport supporting local businesses. And although this has been a timely thing for me, I started talking to Freeport kind of in 2016 about adjusting things. And you guys, although it's taken a long time, have accommodated and have been supportive. I'd just like to thank the town of Freeport for that.
Wheels of justice move slowly.
What's that?
Wheels of justice, they move slowly.
They do sometimes, yes.
That's, that's just, that tracks my tenure on the planning board, I think, pretty closely. So, yeah.
Oh, days up, yeah.
David?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if there were, how many licenses were available for, for the metal, medical cannabis dispensary type license? Is that?
Hasn't been set yet.
On the, on the state level, or at the town level?
The town level.
So all the licenses are considered the same, whether it's a caregiver, an adult-use license, a dispensary license, if it was adopted. But they're all the, all the cultivation and processing licenses, no matter what the market, are considered the same under the town of Freeport. Same thing as in Portland. They all kind of treat everything the same across the board.
So this doesn't open up, you know, to where we might have 100 of these things in towns that.
Oh, some.
You wouldn't have more than six, I think, is, is what we've captured at. But then that includes caregivers and adult-use licenses.
There is one differentiation, David, which, which is not necessarily for what we consider cannabis establishments, which are the cultivation or manufacturing facilities that could be growing or producing for either the recreational market or the medical market. It was another area that we, or advised that we didn't have much freedom, so much, let's say, to regulate, which are the caregivers that are operating usually from their own residences. And those are allowed anywhere in town. So as a home occupation. So the term, there's so many terms that get really.
One thing I wanted to bring up is that, according to state law, like, you can't regulate the number of caregivers in your town.
Right.
But I'm still counted as, basically, if I'm not at home, I'm still a caregiver, but I'm, I am being kind of regulated, like, you are trying to regulate the amount of caregivers in town.
If they're not in, if it's not a home occupation, which I always take that term.
Right, but I don't think the state makes that difference.
Yeah, okay.
Just to put, I, I don't, I don't really have a problem with it, but I just wanted to make that a point. I don't think that's.
Well, you're saying the four and four, whatever that limit is, but it doesn't apply to home.
Well, it does in the Freeport rules does, but not according to state law, to my understanding.
Do you know the answer to that?
I mean, that, but that's, that's not for.
That's not on this agenda.
It's on the table, I just wanted to mention.
Yeah, I don't like passing the buck necessarily, but.
Because he's right. I mean, municipality cannot limit the number of caregivers, but they can have land use regulations around caregivers. So when you guys adopted land use regulations, you amended the home occupation. So if you want to grow as a caregiver out of your home anywhere, you can do that by right. If you want to be a caregiver in Freeport, not out of your home, then you fall into one of the commercial categories for which we have performance standards.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Any of us can also grow in our own home by right for our own.
Yeah, that's right.
So the smaller ones that are doing as home occupations, they would fall under that medical cannabis, small-scale caregiver operation.
Is there, and is there a limit to what you could do at your own home?
There is a limit for what you can grow personally in your.
Yeah, how many?
I think it's 30 mature plants.
500 square feet, right.
Just quite a lot, yeah. Okay. Any other questions, or anything for Dave?
I don't know if anybody else has comments on this.
Yeah, comments or thoughts? I mean, it would, as a process reminder, it would go to public hearing next, next week. And who would be notified?
We would, we would hopefully be getting some, you know, review from the town attorney to make sure that we're doing this right. So, and we're kind of waiting to hear from the Office of Cannabis Policy. So I don't know if we will get all that information by next meeting, but we would do our best so that we can. But it's, oftentimes, it takes a while to get information back from the attorney in terms of process. In terms of whether we would be notifying, I think that was, Caroline said that probably not, because it wouldn't be changing the use for the different, it would generally apply to cultivation facilities across the different zoning districts that already allow them and not necessarily, you know, specific to one zoning district.
Yep.
If you're.
For your policy.
Right, yeah, yeah.
If you're interested in, we could notify if there's interest in the planning board, if you want to give me direction to do that.
Tom, I assume you'll notify everyone for us, right?
That's an official notification, right, if you care, if you could.
So, yeah, I guess, Mr. Steven?
Stevenson.
Stevenson, okay. Didn't know if I was pronouncing it right. So I was looking at the, poking around the Office of Cannabis Policy, and there was like the Q and A, and I was trying to understand the difference between the dispensary and a caregiver retail store. And that's kind of like the difference that I was.
The difference between the stores, or?
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, the medical, go ahead.
The difference between the caregiver.
The medical caregiver retail store and the medical dispensary.
There's not a lot of difference, other than some security requirements. I mean, ones operated under, they're just different licenses. But they sell the exact same products, and there's no cap or anything. I think the dispensary licenses are just a little more regulated and have more security requirements.
And whoever's coming in and buying from you has to have a card, like a.
Yep, a medical card, yep.
So it's not, there's no limitation on the number of patients, or whether, it's just anyone?
There used to be. There used to be, yeah. Yeah, there used to be five patients.
Yeah. So that's a big change, yeah. But it's a fast-moving.
There was basically, yeah, people found a loophole, like, essentially. And that fifth person was, like, you'd have four patients, and then that fifth person, you'd constantly be rotating out. So whoever the next cell was, your next, you know, that would be a new patient. People started opening stores. Originally, they had tried to limit, the first licenses that ever came out were dispensary licenses. And they were only allowed six, or seven, or eight. I think there was one per county. And then the caregivers started, and they also allowed caregivers, but they put a really strict limit on five patients. But essentially, we, you know, people found a way around that, and started opening stores. And the state just, you know, realized there really wasn't anything they could do about it. And it was a thriving cottage industry. Like, it's, I don't know, any, anyone that doesn't know someone that's benefited from this industry, especially the state of Maine, the amount of tax revenue that we send them is incredible. And it's almost too much, to the point that our industry is kind of hurting from it. The excise tax on a pound of cannabis on the AU market is over $330, I believe. And the wholesale retail is about $1,600, so it's about 20%, which is why I'm staying in the medical market, because it's, there's less taxes, and there's still a high demand, especially for locals. And it brings the cost down to the, the end user, whether that's a patient or a recreational user.
No, it's interesting to see the law evolved even, I think, yesterday in the news.
It's been a wild ride, that's for sure.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to think, I'm just asking this, because I've always think in terms of like land use and land use impacts. So would this change anything related to, like, how many people would be, like, visiting your facility? I'm just trying to think about, like, parking and whether.
We don't have visitors, but it would, it would, I would have probably, you know, a couple more employees. I would be creating jobs for.
But all, yeah.
But people, you wouldn't be attracting people like.
If that's what you're asking, I got plenty of parking.
It all, so every, I mean, because everything, I mean, the way I look at it, I think, because everything is still governed by the land use that we put in place to mirror the manufacturing and processing and wholesale, I mean, if it's okay for those industries, it shouldn't be any different for your.
So that, and assuming that you were to build a 10,000-square-foot facility, that would come with its own parking requirements.
Yeah, it would be.
Which you may already meet, but if you didn't.
I do. Yep. I have a 10,000-square-foot facility. I'm not looking to expand past that.
Right. No, I feel like we've, we've already been over this issue, and.
Yeah, I'm, I don't.
Assuming we're not talking about anything to do with the dispensary, and we're only talking about manufacturing and processing, we've already decided that it's not our business, what somebody does inside their manufacturing and processing facility.
We, yeah.
Or this would be a cultivation.
Or cultivation, whatever it is. If it's allowed, it's, you know, it's cultivation, but it's behind a, it, it doesn't matter. I don't see why.
Yeah, I mean, that, or that was, at least that was sort of the principle that we used to, to craft this the first time around. I don't, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's, yeah, I, I, to be blunt, I don't want to spend a ton of time on, on this, because I think we've been there. And, yeah, I'm sure you don't either, Dave, so.
I appreciate you guys giving it the time.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. And I just, I would like to see it move forward and help small businesses in town.
Does anyone on the board have a problem with it?
Yeah.
Nope.
I expected that you would, that's why.
Just for consistency.
Yeah, and I just, I just, I remember, I remember very well that Andrew voted against it the first time, which, you know, it still passed, and, and I understand, I sort of expected that from you, Andrew, and no hard feelings, I hope, but.
No, 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 no.
But we'll.
Still, it's just it's a federally.
Federal law should change too soon.
And then I can vote for it. But right now, it's a federally prohibited substance, even though the state of Maine is taxing it and moving the benefits from it.
I, I understand.
Now they can squeeze something out of it, and they feel better. I don't have an issue, but it's federally, I took an oath to uphold the Constitution, and so.
Okay.
That's true.
It is true. It is true.
So weird.
Slowly, it seems like the federal government is catching.
It is very weird. It is very weird. And at risk of violating that oath, hopefully, the town attorney doesn't come after all of us or something.
I know.
We don't need to do any action on this, can we move?
This is just a discussion.
It's a discussion, and so, yeah. I think, I think we have understanding that we still need to wait for legal review, and hopefully that will happen in time to get it on next month's agenda. And if not, we'll get it on as quickly as we can after that.
And if there's anything I can do to help, if you need, if you have, sometimes getting all those, it can be difficult. We definitely have contacts there, happy to help any way we can.
Jesse Laurie works for you, is that true?
It's true.
What do you know?
Yeah, he's, he's a great guy. Big fan.
All right, we're workout buddies.
Oh, CrossFit guy. Okay, all right.
I see him every morning.
Yep.
We were kind of struggling to find, like, the definition of it on the state rules, so that's kind of why I'm like, not sure what it is. But we'll get some guidance, and we'll look.
And Caroline has my email, so if you have any more questions or think of anything, please reach out. We're happy to help.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dave. All right, item number four is a discussion of possible amendments to Section 201, general restrictions regarding lots transected by two or more zoning districts' boundaries. So this is one that has been sort of around for a while. I know we have at least one particular landowner in town who is affected by this issue, where this family or individual has land that, part of it is in the resource, one of the resource protection zones, and another part is in a rural residential zone. And it makes life very difficult for them, I think, if they wanted to do much. So that, the idea is to hopefully try to streamline or make it possible for landowners to, I mean, it's just what we're always trying to do, right? Make it easier for people to do stuff without hurting the environment or other people's, other landowners' rights, so.
Yeah, so we started drafting some amendments that we thought would make it easier. But then, upon further looking into it, then it became, it's not really clear enough. And talking to the code officer, it seems like the people who are mostly affected by this right now are the people who are on that rural residential one and rural, I mean, resource protection two districts. So we probably might come back for them June and have something slightly different, perhaps keep H and just add, you know, that there's, that if anything's on the rural protection two district, not just the rural protection one, that it could be included towards that, the calculation of the size. A little bit of background is that we are.
Wait, so are you saying you're going to delete that, or?
Yeah, I'm saying that I'm going to probably bring back a very different draft than the one that you have in front of you right now. We had a little powwow.
So should we just table this until we can?
We, I think it might be worth going, at least getting a little bit of background, just so it's in our heads. But, yeah, I agree, we shouldn't spend too much time on it.
Well, I'm just wondering, what, are there guiding principles of, regardless of how it's written up, of how to deal with this issue?
Right. So, let me give a little bit of background. So, we have the rural protection, I mean, the resource protection one and two districts. I think if you look back historically, I mean, these started pretty much on like the late, you know, the 70s, almost. It was Freeport's ways of protecting its water resources, not just the drinking water for the public drinking water system, but also the shoreline. So eventually, these got morphed, but in, while, I think usually in other towns, like the shoreline zone would become an overlay, the rural, the resource protection, sorry, I keep saying rural, the resource protection one now is inside the shoreline area, even though there's no shoreline around it. So that's been identified as an issue that we probably need to take care of at some point. And the other one is that resource protection two district. And that, so that doesn't really follow parcel lines. Let me share my screen here with you guys, so that I can show you what I am talking about, maybe make it a little bit easier. So this is an example of the rural protection two district. And you can see how it has a, you know, the shape is not really following the parcels lines, and that's why it's creating this issue where so many people are falling into two different zoning districts.
Now, why is that zone?
Why is it that way?
As I said, it was following like an aquifer. So it's based on a natural resource, sort of like, sometimes we, we have, towns will have like an overlay district, you know, and then you have the underlying zoning district. So that's your base district, but then you have this like extra water protection standards on top of it, like the shoreline zoning is. But we haven't taken that approach. This is a future project. I think right now, we just really want to fix this, so that we can help these people that are in these situations without having to change the map. But I'm just flagging this for future notice.
Wasn't this changed years ago, because it was more restrictive, this zone right here? Because I think some of this was put in resource protection, because Desert Pines had their own wellheads, and now they're on town water. And I thought that was removed years ago.
Well, apparently, it's still there. I'm not familiar with the entire history of it, but this has been here for a while.
I mean, if this is the one and only place where it's happening, and that's true.
No, 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 there's, it's happening, you know, all throughout, so.
That was resource protection, because of that subdivision up there, Desert Pines had their own wellheads.
We have resource protection two, like, sort of.
The reason it was there was because they had a wellhead.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And I thought it got removed years ago. I was pretty sure, because I own a piece of land in that zone, and I thought it was removed.
Right, so I.
Caroline, do you have any, welcome back to the room.
It's still on the official.
You're invisibly, oh, you're answering our technical question.
Well, this is a technical question for you. So Andrew, well, I'll let you say it. I don't need to.
Well, RP2 over there for Desert Pines, I thought that restriction was removed, because they went on town water, and they no longer use their own wellheads anymore.
So sometime after I started here, there was RP1, there was some RP1 and RP2 out there.
So it became RP2 instead of RP1.
Water updated the study. They got rid of the RP1. They added the RP2 based upon the aquifer recharge area. And then Freeport, because they wanted to be overly cautious, this, not sure about that one, but this one down there.
Well, that's the new wellhead on the Webster.
They put the old aquifer area and the new one, and made it bigger to be more protective.
So, yeah.
I remember it changed, because.
Yeah, it was RP1, I bet that's what you're thinking of.
I was three acre lot, and I was, I was not able to build a two-family. Now, I think I can build a two-family, because it was, I think, it went down to, so maybe that's what happened. But I remember something changed.
Yeah, because you could do nothing in RP1.
Yeah, well, I, I had to have.
And you kind of still can do nothing in RP1.
You couldn't put anywhere else.
In, so, in, in RP1, you can do nothing?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Okay. And in RP2, and there was a logic to that. I'm assuming there's good logic to that.
Yeah, so the purpose of RP2. Yeah, so the purpose of RP two is to protect the groundwater, so you can read that on the, you know, the, right under the section.
So if any change is made to the way it sits right now, who would be, who wants to do what? Because it would seem to me that whatever restrictions are under RP two, unless we learn something new and go down a whole other road, you don't, nobody wants to remove those restrictions.
Right, for instance, it has like an impervious surface restriction that is much more strict than the rural residential one. So yes, I definitely would not advise to get rid of RP two without substituting it with some kind of other, you know, it could be, um, like a groundwater protection over, like overlay.
No, I get that there's a whole other way you might be able to do this, but if, but you want to try to deal with the people who are on both sides and I'm trying to figure out why. Why are we trying to change anything?
Right.
Can't remember why we have.
It's the request.
It's because of, I mean, they're requesting to be able to do what that would have what effect on what?
It has a lot to do with H, I think, doesn't it, right?
Yeah, that's why we were thinking that maybe.
When part of a lot is in a resource protection district, that area in the resource protection, uh, so, oh, sorry, that's just RP one, though.
Yes, that's what you were thinking about, maybe a way to solve this.
Let me try a hypothetical. So you have a half, half of your lots over here and half your lots over here and there's an impervious restriction over here and there's an impervious restriction over here too, but it's not as restrictive, right? Because there's always an impervious surface restriction.
Um, actually, no, I don't think rural residential one has a one, which I've been wanting to flag for a while.
Well, this is what I'm trying to figure out. So what would you want to do, so obviously you can't do anything in RP two and you shouldn't be allowed.
You can't do something in RP two.
You can do something.
Yeah, you can have houses, yes.
Whatever it is you can't do, supposedly there's a reason why you can't do them. So now you have a half of your property that doesn't have that restriction and you want to do what? Because you have this other part of your property that does have the restriction. You want to be able to build more over here because you didn't do it over there or?
So it took me a while to like wrap my head around this because it sounded so.
Caroline, can you wake this back up over there?
Cecilia has to do that for you, I think. Can you wake it up or no?
Did it?
Hi, Donna.
All asleep.
You have the remote right there.
Assuming Dave is still there, but we can't see.
I'm still here.
Are we still there?
Everybody's still here, we just need a picture.
The remote?
I have not been, is it?
Yeah, it's that one. Now you just have to turn the TV back on.
It fell asleep.
I just think we ought to look at the definitions of IP one and IP two before we make any decision because, you know, and, and to say you have to, even if it's split, you'd have to go to the space standards of the stricter zoning in the district? I mean, so why would you want to add stricter zoning to the other half of your lot? I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, I think that's probably why we're talking about getting a different draft back.
Yes, yes, so.
And we need to see what RP one and RP two is and really the reasons why they're there. I mean, there must be some reason why they're there.
I'm assuming a good reason, so.
So my concern.
Maybe it's outdated.
But my concern is that I want, so I don't disagree with any of that, but I also think if there's a specific problem that can be solved in a targeted way while we're in the midst of a comp plan, design review and all this other stuff.
Trying to get to, what's the problem?
Let me show you with an image, so there's.
Depends on, if part of your lot is split through and you got setback issues, the piece that's not in RP one or two is affected by what's in RP, the piece that's in and, you know.
Why? Why would it be affected by that? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Because you're split by, so your lot is split, half, you know, half your lots in one zone, half your lots in the other. So which one applies and your setbacks are different and then you got setbacks from lot lines.
This isn't just a RP one, RP two issue, it's a bigger issue than that.
See, when we did Route one years ago, we tried to follow all the lot lines so they wouldn't be split down Route one. That's why it's sort of jagged on the, on the coastal side, on the east side, because we wanted, didn't want to split lot lines.
Yeah, we have.
And it's a big problem. If you got, if you got a zone around through the middle of your lot, it's a big problem.
Yeah, so it's perhaps two different problems. One of them is, you know, as you can see, we have, we have a, basically a zoning district that is meant to protect the groundwater, that does not follow parcel boundary lines, which makes it so that a lot of people find themselves in two different zoning districts really often. And we also have some misalignments throughout our map that might have been the result of, um, um, maybe different map projections that were used, so that a lot of people end up having these slivers, um, that are, where is the?
It looks like.
It's a little sample of the zoning map, so it's a.
I'm gonna go with, um.
It's a little, um.
Where are we?
I think this might be.
Elmwood Road.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe, it is, yep, yep, yep.
So.
South Street, yep.
But the issue that we're having, and I'll stop sharing my screen now, um, the issue that we're having is that the way it's, because of the way the ordinance is, um, written, the way it's interpreted now is that you have to meet, um, you have to meet the space standards for both the districts. So say you have a two and a half acre lot, but it's intersected by rural protection, uh, I mean, residential one and resource protection two. Instead of just needing the two and a half acres to have a lot, you're gonna need five now because each one of them require two and a half. So that's why it's creating such a nightmare for a lot of property owners that are in that situation.
Like double.
Yes, it took me, I, I had the same reaction.
Now, starting to get it.
My lot on the Hunter Road is three acres. When it was RP one, I couldn't build a two family because I needed, I think, two and a half acres per unit.
In each district too, it's not even.
In the RP one, I needed, even though I had a three acre lot.
Right.
Now that's RP two, now I could, I could build a two family there if I wanted to, but now it's, now it's like all the other zones, it's one and a half un, acres per unit. So it changed the use of the land.
So you have a couple, you have a couple issues. You have a zoning map that was developed to print in a paper map and when you take it and you blow it up, like Cecilia just did, in paper it looks better and then when you blow it up, it doesn't perfectly follow natural features where it should. So it does put lots into multiple districts. So that's one, but that's not really where, why we're here. The second issue.
Before, sorry, no, you finish first.
The second issue is that resource protection, those RP two areas, RP one and RP two are problematic in Freeport because of the way we've treated them. We know that, they should be overlays, they are based upon groundwater studies and they, like Cecilia said, they are regularly shaped. But then like Andy said, you also have issues where people have these big lots and they've cut them off over time, shapes have changed and they might be in multiple districts. So if you're in an existing lot in two districts, that's not a problem until you go to split it because if you are creating a new lot and it's not just two districts, it could be in multiple districts. For each portion in a different district, the way the ordinance is written, you have to meet the standards for that district. So in this case, you got this request during LT, LD two thousand and three, there's a family, they want to give a lot to their children. But they can't because they can't split the lot off and meet the two and a half acres in the RP two, the two and a half acres in the RP one and the two hundred feet of frontage in each and the lot coverage. So that's where this comes to play. Interestingly enough, this was an issue identified years ago that the planning board took up and found another solution and just didn't pursue making the change. So here we are again, we've had cases where people want to split their lots and because we have this provision, they aren't able to. So the council has given the directive to have us look at this because it's a barrier to creating additional lots for housing.
So, tech, technical question, how difficult from a staff resource perspective would it be to make it an overlay?
So I, so the map issue, if we get grant funding for other things, we could potentially outsource and get our map cleaned up. So we shouldn't really focus on that. The overlay, I think we would want to be on, have Main Water onboard with that. They've had a lot of turnover. Um, we have RP one, we, RP one's a shoreline zone and we are using it to protect water sources and up in Frost Gully and down in the south Freeport wellhead. I would be hesitant to be changing that without an update in the stud, from the study that was done in the seventies. Um, for me, for the other RP two, I think we could do it, but we would want to partner with Main Water to see what really adequate restrictions we need in place and then as a community, we would need to decide what the zoning should be underneath. I think when we go through the comp plan process, kind of to the area that Andy said, Desert Pines has a non, a lot of non-conforming lots. Being in RR one or RP two is problematic. I think we'll hear from people that that's an area that we need to revisit the zoning. So I think it's a, it's a multi-step, large project.
Okay, so it's, so it's, so then we need to break it down into like, okay, if the end goal is to make it a, a, um, an overlay that is functioning successfully according to Main Water's requirements and updated studies. So that's the end goal, but in the meantime.
But you would still have this problem.
Right.
On lots that don't involve, so there's, yeah, three things to make fixing the puzzle.
Yep, so, but what, but also like what can we do if we fix the third part of that that you said? So the map part, okay, we outsource and we get somebody who, to just line up the GIS data with the.
Right, to me like that, if we go that, if we do that, it's a, not a, hey, this parcel's clearly split in half by old zoning, but hey, it's drawn over here, can you move it five feet to follow the road type thing, clean up to the digital version.
The question I was going to ask a minute ago, is, would there be a way to do that without actually doing a map amendment, but to do like a language amendment that just says something like where there's a discrepancy between the paper map and the data that, and it's, you'd have to find a way to quantify like the intent is clear.
Where the intent was to.
Then you just, then you just go by the intent, not by the, I mean, the.
You adopt the digital map in the zoning ordinance, you reference it, so I think to, to do it the right way, if we can shuffle some other projects, I would really, let, if we're gonna do it, let's just do it, like, let's just fix the obvious errors.
Fair enough, yep. Um, and then the, okay, so, so there's the map, there's the overlay thing which needs studies and whatever, so that's gonna take a while. So then the last question that would simplify whether it's, involves an RP one or two district or whether it just is like you're on the V one MDA boundary or something.
Yeah, I think.
That's the one that we need to go after now.
The code officer said that most of these problems are coming up and just like the, um, you know, the resident that said on, when we were doing the LD two thousand and three amendments, the one who requested this change, um, is, is on that RP two and rural residential one district. So if we could, um, and, and we were all talking yesterday, that's when we're like, oh, maybe this won't work out because if we have the amendment that we are showing you right now, it might mean that the people who are in the RP one, then you can't do anything with that, that is super strict.
Everything is non-conforming, yeah.
So that's why maybe another way around it would be to actually keep that H that we had struck down and just add RP two in it, but we can, you know, um, do some homework and make sure that that would be the correct approach. And that would possibly, you know, help fix the problem for people who are in this specific situation with that RP two.
I also wonder, when a lot is transected by a zoning district boundary, the, the regulations set forth in the ordinance, and I'm reading here from the proposed section F, um, says, when a lot is transected by a zoning district boundary, the regulations set forth in this ordinance for, and then there's a strikeout, for space standard, standards of the stricter zoning district shall apply. I mean, I could imagine a situation where you have like, you know, a little corner of the lot.
Ten feet.
Yeah, is a strict district and then, and that would seem to go against the intent of the zoning ordinance. Where like if, if most of your lot is in the MDB, say, and then you have a little corner in the rural district, all of a sudden you can't use the vast majority of your lot.
Well, why is this change even being proposed? What, what was wrong with the language that was there?
Because, because of the dou, like the doubling up.
Yeah, the doubling up.
I don't understand this doubling up.
The existing language?
Yeah.
Or the proposed.
What was wrong with the existing language? That, that in each area, you have to meet those requirements?
Because in so many, it's so hard to meet in so many cases that it's keeping people from further dividing or splitting the lot.
If you have, if you have a.
I still am not, I'm being dense, I don't get it.
So if you have a section of your, if you have, if your lot is three acres.
Yep.
And a section, and each part of it has a two acre minimum lot size, then you're non-conforming or you can't create that lot because neither.
And you shouldn't peel out too, because that's the zoning.
Yeah, but why is the zone there?
But if either, but if the lot were only in one district or the other, like if you just moved the lot line over one way or the other, then it would be a conforming lot because it would be three acres in a district where the minimum lot size is two acres.
We had it down near, um, is it, down near Winston Hill is another neighborhood. They have like a little pocket of MDR and it went on somebody's lot, so they actually went to get a zoning boundary determination before Board of Appeals because they, a lot of times it's not just the area, it's like the road frontage that they can't put in that district. It's really when you have like a big lot, like a tiny girl lot in this little teeny sliver of RP whatever or the other zone and you just can't get that land area.
So I wonder if, I mean, would there be a way, and this is, I guess, a technical hypothetical question, to say that, you know, in these situations, the regulations for each district shall apply to that, each area of the lot, like by percentage. So if you have a three acre lot and half of your lot is in this zone and half of it's in that zone, then you, you know, then fifty percent isn't, so you divide the lot size by fifty percent and you say, I mean.
And some, some towns take that approach with the percentage. I mean, then you just add, you know, the, it can get tricky with some things because with some districts, you might have like a larger lot area requirement but a lower road frontage requirement and vice versa.
Yeah, but if you just, I mean, it's just math, right?
Yes, but then the, yes, the, the code officers would have to calculate and would be giving them more of that work to do.
That's what Excel.
We're trying for a clean, clear, simplified.
No, I understand, I understand, but like in a way, I mean, an approach like that.
The other thing we, so I guess the question is, is it something, you know, the council asked for us to consider this because we know it's a limiting factor for additional development. So is the planning board willing to look at this? And if you are willing to look at it, do you want to look at it universally? Like, we know it's just not a RP one, RP two issue, even though that's the largest percentage that we probably see? Or do you really want to just look at the RP one, RP two and if it happened to be in V one MDA, we're not doing anything about it right now? And then staff, once we get that feedback, Cecilia could come up with some language and bring it back to you. We looked at the draft language and we already found ways that we could make that a little more clear.
Well, why don't, so, why don't we put it on the agenda again next month with the improved draft language?
So for a public hearing, but do you want to improve it?
No, discussion.
Okay, for discussion.
That's fine, Cecilia's taking some time off, so we're trying to load up June and because this is a priority of the council, we either might ask you to have a public hearing on July third then or later in June, which is totally fine.
Okay.
What is, is, is there a specific, um, request that came from a resident that lied to this?
Yes, it's the same resident that brought this up during LD, at the planning board hearing during LD two thousand and three and we didn't, the planning board didn't do anything about it at the time, which is fine. We had a lot of other stuff, so they then went to council.
So I guess if, in the interest of advancing this in a situation where it would, I mean, what, the alternative approach to keep it moving might be to send out draft language, schedule pub, well, that's kind of annoying. If you schedule a notice of public hearing.
I think we need to see the draft language and really.
No, sorry, I got hung up on, once I got to notification, then I said no about it.
This is a, this is a general provision right now. If you go district specific, then we will have a lot of notifications. So I would definitely not want to, if you're gonna only do something that impacts RP one, RP two, then we're gonna have a lot of notification based upon your policies, so.
Right now, there is no notification?
Because it's on section two or one.
Provision, yeah, you don't have a notification policy there.
So we could schedule a public hearing and then just table it theoretically, right, if we.
You could, if, I mean, it's an ad in the paper circulating, it's really up to you guys. I mean, you don't want to, this is a priority of the council, they sent it to you.
Right, that's why I just don't.
You want to take your time and look at it.
Oh, I am a hundred percent in favor of taking our time and looking at the big issue, but I also see a po, a pathway to help somebody specifically in the short term and if it's another month for somebody, like, they could have been waiting a long time and I don't, you know, if there's an opportunity to help a specific problem in a way that doesn't create additional problems.
Is there any paperwork on this request? I, I'm sorry, I'm just being so dense, but I totally don't get it and I.
I'm not so, I'm not, I'm not, it's not that I don't get it here, but I gotta wonder, I think if, you know, I think the map cleanup is the thing to do for quick fix, it's gonna take care, I think, of a lot of these problems. We have these slivers, which is what I'm hearing that some of these issues are. If you have a lot that you have resource protection on and maybe part of it doesn't, you know, we still need to be very concerned about the protection of the resource. And that's why it was put there in the first place, so, you know, and I don't think that, that the housing, you know, we're in a need, housing, we need housing, we need housing, but housing doesn't belong everywhere and maybe this is, these are places where. doesn't belong everywhere, and maybe this is, these are places where we don't need to encourage more housing.
I'm not saying the problem that needs to be solved yet, nobody has.
You don't have a split lot, yeah.
No, but if you had a split lot, I still don't, I mean, that portion H makes a lot of sense to me, that if you have part of your lot over there, it ought to count for your lot over here, but, but if you're gonna divide it, then why are you dividing it, a two acre place into a one and a half acre?
It might not be a two acre place, it might be a forty acre place or a thirty acre place, you want to cut off a lot for your kid, and then you run into these regulations, because, you know, there's some, couple of big lots in that RP two zone.
In the reminder, in the case of RR one and RP two, where we have most of these, they both have a two and a half acre minimum lot size. Granted, RP two has a ten percent impervious area, they have two acres per dwelling unit, so you're gonna be limited if you want to add additional dwelling units, and they have some environmental provisions such as storing certain things, manure, et cetera, on your site, but they still both have a pretty, they have the same general lot size for a single family.
Yeah, yeah, so the size is about the same, and to go off on what Caroline was saying, you know, it's, what we're doing is, so in the rural protection, resource protection, sorry, I keep doing that, on the resource protection two district, you need two and a half, you could still plop a house there with a septic system, it's not necessarily so much, you know, I wouldn't consider it the strongest groundwater protection ordinance, it is what it is, but it does have that ten percent impervious, which I think does make it stronger, so you do want to keep those protections there. But on the other hand, when I look at section H that we have crossed out here, you know, why would we allow something on the resource protection one to count, like that area to count towards meeting, meeting the required minimum lot area? But we wouldn't for RP two, if they're both kind of serving the same purpose. So maybe adding that either RP one and RP two, you know, would be one way of solving that.
That makes perfect, I mean, if it's one lot and part of it's over here, I'm just, I'm more, I'm always in favor of, you know, of, of property owners' rights, I just don't understand what, who can't do what and why.
I think, I think it would make way, for the resource protection issue, it would make way more sense with an overlay, I think that would solve a lot of this stuff, but I think, yeah.
I think we need, I think we need a good visual here.
An example of what can't be done, and I think I'll, I'll open up to it, I just don't get it.
Yes, so can you pull up your map?
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking maybe that would help, let me pull out the map again, do you want me to pull up the specific example over here, and we can zoom in?
Yeah, so for, for example, let's just look at this, so, all right, fine, stop, stop, stop.
Why can't, why can't we, why can't we visit the specific example of the one that brought it up?
I have no idea whose lot this is, but let's just pretend, let's play pretend for now. So pretend this person has a ten acre lot, they have, they're not in subdivision, they can divide it, whatever. They want to create a two and a half acre lot, they can't, they could create a lot up here, because they could cut, they could create frontage, the whole thing's in light green, which is RR one, two and a half acres. So if we're saying this is ten acres, let's just pretend this is half an acre, the dark green, RP two. They can't cut off the back portion, because if you have any RP two, that dark green has to be two and a half acres with the two hundred feet of frontage, and so does the light green. So they would have to have a five acre lot, meet all those standards of those two districts, even though they only have this little sliver.
Why? That's what seems.
Because, because that's what it says.
Because that's what F is saying.
Because that's what it says.
So, these people cannot.
Shall apply to the air of the lot in each district.
The other place, you could have this, we've seen it, there's RP.
Oh, now I understand F.
Right, so, and it's so, like, that's a case where they have a lot, in some cases, because this is so odd, or other districts are odd, it could be this teeny tiny sliver, you could have this huge lot, but you can't split off that back portion, because you don't have your two hundred feet of frontage in the RP two, because there's no way to get it, and you don't have that two and a half acres.
Right, and it could mean.
Could I go back to your first example?
Hypothetical type of a lot.
That hypothetical, and you cut off the back half, you got five acres in the front and five acres in the back.
Well, you could cut off two and a half acres in the front.
Because the green part isn't two and a half acres.
Right.
Why does that?
Because F says if you want to do that.
You have to meet this bulk standard.
You need to meet the space and bulk standards, the two and a half acres, the frontage, the impervious, in each color.
It's badly written, and that's why it needs to be changed.
That's just a badly written thing.
Yeah, that's the idea, that's why we need to change it. That's why I'm, that's why I'm trying to find a way to, to fix that particular problem for these particular people quickly, while also understanding that we need more.
We need to straighten out the lot lines.
Yeah, so, um, yes, I think, you know, we need to do map cleanup now that we're digital. I'm less worried about those people, because honestly, in a lot of cases, they're smaller lots. It's really these people with these big lots that want to create more, in a case like this isn't a mapping error, this is just the way it's drawn.
That's a different, that's a different.
That's a different issue, hundred percent, yep.
And that, and that would be solved by an overlay, where you say.
Yep.
If you're gonna do anything in this area, you need whatever, I don't know what you need, I'm just making step up, but you need a stormwater management plan, and you can't have more than whatever percent.
Yes, if this were fixed and turned into an overlay, this would go away, but like some of those larger, larger lots on like MDA, MDB, or where they've split off over time, it would still help those people.
And I mean, it's common when you have very large lots, you know, several town, like Portland is going through this right now, trying to align their zoning map, so it matches, you know, parcels, the parcel, the property, but when you have a very, very large property, it's, it's okay to be in two different districts, as long as it's not just a sliver, you know, because usually you could even split the lot eventually in two sizes and say, you know, I have twenty feet left over here, can you just incorporate it into that one zoning district? So that's not really like a, a unusual scenario, it's just that we have that problem even in small lots, and that's when they shouldn't have, not in the situation where it's a nature-based, you know, boundary, and not necessarily our, you know, with, with our parcel one, so.
Yeah, you might have it like there's pockets down on Bow Street that are drawn off environmental features, that's another area that it doesn't follow a pretty straight line.
I mean, we have some interesting parts of the zoning map in general.
So, does that make sense? And if that makes sense, now what are the thoughts of the board?
I'm all for fixing it somehow.
Oh, it's.
I don't know exactly how to do it yet, because I'd like to really review the reasons those things are there, not just take it verbatim that they're there for a reason.
Two oh one point I I. I think it's H.
Oh, two oh one point H, oh, 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 oh.
Okay, so.
Certainly alpha clean enough of maps.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that the sense I'm hearing, and feel free, board members to correct me if I'm wrong, the sense I'm hearing is that this is an interesting and sort of important issue, I, as always, am worried about staff and board resources, I wonder if there's opportunities to, with the mapping, you said that that can kind of be done separately, so how do we?
From a staffing perspective, I would not do the mapping in-house.
Right.
If we had some money allocated towards ordinance work, if we're fortunate to have money available, if we get grants, and we could get the mapping work done, I would outsource that and just be like, clean up all the errors, would bring back a new version of the map for you guys to adopt and just move forward. It wouldn't be really, the intent would be cleanup, not changing weird zoning lines, just like along roads and things where it clearly doesn't align.
So, so that's the mapping, so we don't necessarily need to worry about that, hopefully, and you'll just keep us on the loop, if we have, if we get these grants and we have extra money, then.
Yep.
Will you just pursue that, or do?
That will just, that will just get done.
That will just get done, okay, great. So then the next, I guess the next question is about the overlay, I mean, if we wanted to have a study done, or have, if we went to main water and said, hey, it's been fifty years, like, can you guys help us with this? I mean, it seems like it would be in their interest as well.
So, I had conversation, so this came up in South Freeport, we have the South Freeport Water District, which regulates separately, they have a wellhead, they have non-chlorinated water, they have RP one around there, so that's kind of a discussion to have with them, I think, about the zoning, they have not had updated studies, they have older studies. I had talked to main water before their president left about the pocket up in Frost Gully, it was RP one, and they kept it RP one because it was a above groundwater source, he didn't feel that we necessarily needed to keep that RP one there, they've had change over there at main water, so we would want them on board. I recently had a inquiry from a resident to have Freeport revisit the RP two zoning, which I remember hours and hours and hours hearing about this of wellhead, as probably does Andy, because he was on the council at the time, with main water and the zoning, yep, and how we got to that. So I feel like if we are going to change that, you know, there's best practices, there's state's requirements, but main water helped us come up with that data, which is why we have the shape, and they helped us come up with the regulations, and so I would, it's our drinking water, I would take that very seriously, and so whether it be a study or something else, i- if we're gonna do a study, we have no money to study the drinking water, it's probably very expensive, so that would maybe have to be an after-comp plan discussion.
You think those old maps go back to when Bobby Gerber did this stuff?
Yes.
I thought so.
Yes, the RP one down in Pine Street does.
Yeah, yeah, off Pine Street.
And it hasn't been updated since.
And you think the, the ones up here in Frost Gully, those are open, those are open resource, now, I didn't think they were using that water.
My last conversation is that they weren't using them, but as we've talked about with Brett and the Dogbone studies, we do know there's some capacity issues.
They might need more water.
Yep, so I think it's.
They have a ton of water on the Webster Road, they've only got a few, they can drill more wells, wells out there, but.
Right, and my sitting on Webster Road, not to go on a tangent, is that the town did put some limitations on how much water they could be withdrawing from that well.
That's, that's the last time I saw Bobby Gerber do it, drawdown, basically that whole thing runs way up into New Gloucester, vein of water.
So yeah, project three, I think, I feel like is a bigger project with other partners at the table.
So for now, we can't really deal with the map, we just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Why doesn't, if you made H just apply to both, solve the entire problem?
I think it would for these situations.
It would solve it only for places that have RP one and RP two, in addition to the left, which is fine if that's a step, an incremental step you want to take.
Yep, I'm fine with that, I'm also.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know what the other boundary lines are that, where else it happens, but it seems to me.
I mean, there's.
Why wouldn't the same thing apply? If you have a, the idea that you would need two and a half acres of dark green makes no sense, but if you.
Can you pull up Route one?
If the dark green's supposed to have two and a half acres, and you have two and a half acres, it's just some bits light green, I don't know why that wouldn't always work.
Looks like someone's head. So, like, if you want, so, for example, let's just use this for fun, so if you zoom in right here in the middle, there, now, we're not, right here, we're looking at MDA, MDB, and V1, so these people here, they're, we drew it as a pretty straight line, if this person with this big lot wants to split it, they need to have the required area in V1, and they need to have the required area in the MD.
It's just written wrong.
If you don't change F and you just change H, which is totally fine, it's a choice you can make, a policy decision, these people would have to abide by F if they went to split this big lot.
But they might have that on that BC one, I can't remember.
Right, I'm just showing another visual, yeah, example.
Is it thirty thousand?
Because that's a pretty big lot.
Now I understand your F change.
That goes right through those two or three lot, there's a couple lots that have bisects, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, those three, so H, and like, so to me, if we did cleanup, like, if we did map cleanup, like we talked about, we would clean this up, because this is messy, this was clearly drawn that way for a reason, this would not be staff doing a map cleanup, this would really be a planning board discussion for changing.
Right, it seems like it should come down.
Zoning.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta decide, yeah.
Right, so that is more of a decision for you guys, this is like a mapping cleanup, but this is just another example that doesn't involve RP.
But that's a, that's a good, I mean, just to keep using the visual, that big lot there.
Yep.
The, say it's flipped, where, like, most likely the V1 district.
It's more permissible.
Yeah, we don't know.
So, so imagine that the, the, the standards in the gray area are strict, more strict, right? So then that lot now is, I guess you could just put the line on the boundary and make a new.
I mean, they could come for a map amendment, but, because they're right on the line, but anyways, that, that, these are the people that not changing F, these kind of scenarios wouldn't capture.
Right, so, I mean, I think F is.
But, but if you make it so that F makes it stricter.
Right.
Does it, how does it help those people?
So I think, we talked, if, so if you don't, if you want to go beyond the RP one, RP two, not just changing whatever letter, I can't remember now, but F, we had, so, we have, we have, we have a lot, I know that has four different zoning provisions, and so Cecilia looked at it as an example, and there was a conflict, one zone had a big lot, another zone had a lot of frontage, so if you want to go with the tweak to F, we would pick a determining factor, probably be like the one with the greater lot size or something like that, we would just tweak it a little bit and bring some language back to you.
I still like my, you just make an Excel spreadsheet, and you say, all right, thirty percent of the lot is in this zone, five percent's in this other zone, for, and you just crunch the numbers, and this is how much road frontage you need, you need four hundred and thirteen point two feet, what, you know?
You guys are the decision makers and the policy setters, so if that's the direct goal.
It wouldn't be that much, it'd be less.
That's what staff will do.
Six feet, you know, it's like, I don't know, I.
That makes it complicated.
Eh, kind of, but it also simplifies the, like, it, it makes the math seem complicated, but it also like, kind of cuts to the center of the.
Solving the problem.
Solving the problem, so.
It's almost, it's almost easier to figure some way, they can use a space standard, just don't build in, just don't build in that corner that's RP two, that's all.
That's what I thought, you just.
Just don't build in that corner that's RP one or RP two, you get the space standards, but, you know, if you want to cut off two and a half acre lot, and you got half an acre in RP two.
Well, that's basically what, that's basically what H is saying.
It counts, it's just square footage, but you just can't put a building in it.
Yeah, the RP one currently counts as a square footage, you can't build in there, in most cases, it's the flood plain, so you don't even want to build in there.
Right, and that's, I mean, that's what H is basically doing.
Exactly.
Which is fine, yeah, so, okay, so.
So it's actually relatively close, what you got here.
Okay, so, so if we, how does the board feel then about adding, I get the sense that we generally feel okay about adding RP two into H, does that seem?
Yes.
Follow that?
Why wasn't it there in the first place?
Who knows?
So why, so, so, so why have you taken out H?
No, so, so we were going to, but we're thinking now about putting it back in, but just adding RP two, since RP one is already there, and it would fix the problem for these, you know, people who are mostly having, encountering this as a difficulty.
Okay, and then.
Does that work, Carolyn?
I mean, it's really up to you guys, if you want to fix the RP one, RP two, and then leave F, you could, you could do that. And then some cleanup would fix some other people, and then.
No, I think you'd want actually both, because.
Well, I think, I think if you change F as written, we would, my guess, and this is obviously without knowing, we would probably create some nonconformity.
Correct, now I see the problem.
So.
I just, I just, on F, I just don't want to make it.
I don't know, wait, I'm not.
It first seemed like a good idea, but then.
The standards didn't leap out of that area that has the standards.
So if you had.
The whole lot, just because you're part of it.
Yeah, so if you, if you had a house, if you had a minimum lot size parcel that had a little corner that had a bigger minimum lot size.
Yeah, like C1, a budding, RR.
Yeah, exactly, if you had a minimum, yeah, then you, if, that would put you into nonconforming territory, which would then, like, if you came for a building permit for other things.
Yeah, you'd have the reverse problem, yep.
So, I don't want to do that, but I also don't like F as it is, because I don't think it makes a lot of sense, but, um-
Let's take, let's take another shot at another night.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm fine with that, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get, I am trying to get to the point where we could potentially schedule a public hearing, though, so that we don't keep delaying this for the people that we're trying to help. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so do you guys wanna take up RP one, RP, put RP two, like, the suggestion from the code officer to consider putting RP two with the RP one?
And then just leave F alone?
Leaving F alone.
For now, I think that's fine.
We'll have to review your policy that most likely would require large notification, which is fine, I'm just making you aware of that.
There's something wrong with F as currently written.
That's right.
The way you changed it is not good, but the way it was seems to imply that you could, that you, yeah-
Totally.
There's something wrong with F.
We, I, we are a hundred percent in agreement with that.
Right, so if you do the RP one, RP two, you're only fix-
Right, we're fixing a small part of the problem.
We think a majority of the problem, you're not fixing all the problems, and we are all acknowledging that.
Well, it's the regulations shall apply to the area of the lot in each district. That seems correct in principle, the problem is the other parts of the lot, it depends which rules.
Yeah, and Sam makes a good point, if you flip it, because in the old, you know, we actually did talk about introducing transition zones, and after the last comp plan, and our community did not want to go there. So we do have rural zones, abutting commercial zones, and you have large differences in some cases in the lot area, so he's right, if you flip it, you could just kinda be shifting the problem in some cases.
I, I think unless somebody has a bright idea about how to fix F before we have to notify, my personal preference would be to leave F for another bigger round, fix, add RP two to section H for now, sorry if it requires a lot of notification, and then move forward.
And so I would say then F and the zoning map cleanup, go on your big list of-
Exactly, exactly.
Of to-do stuff, yep.
Yep. Mitch, this can be your, this can be your homework, is to rewrite F in a way that-
You'd have to go think, the spirit of what it says doesn't seem wrong, but the actuality of it-
That's why it's your homework.
The part about the two and a half acres in the dark green, that makes no sense at all.
So if you can figure out how to word it, because we're not gonna do it tonight, so-
I pulled out like ten different examples from different municipalities.
I, I do wanna keep moving, I think we, we got a lot out of that, I'm glad we didn't just table it, because I think we learned a lot, and so, even though we're not gonna go on quite a bit later, so, anyway, item number five is a discussion of possible amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding potentially, sorry.
So what was decided, I'm sorry, what was the next step?
So we're gonna, basically, we're, we're going to, just, yeah, to recap that, that lengthy discussion, we are going to put, we, put, put section F, subsection F back the way it was, so unstrike and strike the addition, so just, just revert, reject the change.
Reject all changes.
Yep, reject the change to F, and then for H, we are going to, again, reject that change, and then add the additional change, so that it will read, when a part of a lot is in a resource protection district, either RP one or RP two, or some better way of, including both resource protection districts, that, that area in the resource protection districts shall be counted toward the requirement, et cetera, so it'll-
We'll work with that, just to add that-
And that will solve, that will solve a problem for certain people in the short term, and we will then acknowledge that there is a bigger problem that needs to be solved. Two other big problems that need to be solved, one, three other problems that need to be solved, one is the map cleanup, two is converting the existing resource protection districts into overlay zones, which requires additional study, which we don't have the funding to do right now, but hopefully at some point in the future, maybe after the comp plan, we can get funding for that. And then the third thing is to find a better way to rewrite subsection F, which is a bigger, a bigger issue that we're not gonna be able to tackle tonight, but we do wanna address for the future. How'd I do?
Very good.
Thank you.
So, item number five is a discussion of possible amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding potentially exempting subdivision review for multifamily projects per Title Thirty of the MRS, which, what is it, the main, whatever statute, some number, basically state law, so there's a state law that allows us to potentially exempt subdivision review for certain multifamily projects. The municipal reviewing authority, which is us, the planning board, would need to make a finding that Freeport Site Plan Review Ordinance, which is Section 602, meets the state's required review criteria. So basically, we are allowed to exempt subdivision review for certain multifamily projects if our site plan review ordinance is comprehensive enough that it covers what the state considers to be essential criteria for that review.
Right, and that essential criteria is, and I'll post this on the website afterwards, I forgot to add it to your packet, but it was that paper that was standing there, it's, um-
Uh-oh.
It's also on the notes, no, it's this one here, I highlighted mine, but it's like the best test.
Oh, oh, that's what you handed out, yep.
Yeah, so it's, it must include criteria regarding stormwater management, sewage disposal, water supply, vehicular access, and it may include criteria regarding other environmental effects, layout, scale, appearance, and safety.
All of that is already in the site plan standards, is that correct?
That is what the planning board needs to come, conclude that it is.
Can I ask one other general question first? We keep using the word multifamily projects, but I'm trying to understand why we're not using the word multifamily building. And the reason is because the minute it's a more than one, I can't imagine why we would make this change.
Oh, yes, yes.
But if it's a single building, then I can't imagine why we would.
I'm always struggling with that, because I want to call it a multifamily development, but you're right, it would be for a single building.
A single building multifamily project.
Aren't we, aren't we trying to move towards structure?
Structure, whatever word works for you.
So, structure.
But if it's a single building, I don't understand why we're talking about subdivision, and if something needs to be added to site plan to cover it, then let's just do that and-
Well, like this building, this project next door was two buildings, but they still had to go same owner, but they had to go through subdivision.
So Maine, you know, we do things-
So you might not wanna just, mm.
I was gonna say, I was gonna push Mitch on that a little bit to see really where he would come down.
So, the state of Maine defines a subdivision as the division of land or a building into three or more units. So if you were to build a brand new, you know, or, or add in that period of time, that's less than five years, or however, there's so many, like, the little loopholes and exemptions, but let's say you're gonna, you have one parcel of land, you're putting a three-unit family in one building in there, but boom, you triggered subdivision review, right? So you have to go through all that process of subdivision review, together with site plan, you know, unless the town, so for us, the planning board, you know, thinks that, you know what, our site plan is adequate enough, we don't need to subject them to go through subdivision review as well, so that's kind of what we're discussing today.
And this is another, so we flagged this as part of the LD 2003 process, and I remember, we had a brief discussion about it, and basically we said, yeah, this sounds great, but we need to spend some time on it before we just sort of adopt it.
So you guys kinda, I, I got the impression that you wanted to see a little, like, a comparison. It's so hard to compare the two, because it's like comparing apples to oranges in terms of all the submission requirements, so I put this very messy sort of notes, and I don't know if it helps or hinders, but how I organize this is to show you what the site plan standards are, and then show you, like, a simplification of the subdivision ordinance standards, and compare them to the site plan review standards, just so you see how, you know, and I, they're my opinion of how I think, you know, the site plan review standards already are meeting similar requirements for a lot of them. You know, keep in mind that we, our site plan does not need to be the same requirements for subdivision review, they just need to meet that criteria, that stormwater management, sewage disposal, water supply, and vehicular access, so-
Which is all there already, right?
That's up to the board to find. When I come back, when we come back next month, I can, I can put a staff report showing you where I think it is, or where I think it would meet that.
I mean, it seems like in a perfect world, right, there's no project that would go through subdivision without going through site plan, because it's, any big project like that is also gonna have a site plan review.
Right, so you end up having to do both of them.
Any project has a site plan review, doesn't it?
Not any, but most, yeah, I mean, like, residential, yeah, residential projects in a rural area would-
If you could have one that they're just splitting lots, then I don't see why they would do site plan if they're just-
Remodel, something like that, but the, in a perfect world, site plan and subdivision, like, site plan would be the lower barrier and would cover, like, you wouldn't have anything in subdivision, everything in subdivision would be in addition to site, there would be no duplication, right?
There is a lot of duplication.
Right, that's, but in a perfect world, we would align it so that you have site plan for projects that trigger that, and then if you trigger subdivision, you have an additional layer, but you don't have to do anything that you've already done for site plan, and include that as part of the submission package. Does that seem fair to say, as like a target?
It's confusing.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
It was very confusing.
So, I think one of the big differences, kind of like, even the process that somebody has to come through, so for instance, if you're subdivision, and if you're a major subdivision, you automatically are gonna have to come here for three meetings, for, so, for somebody, for a developer that's just trying to build a single, a three or four, six-family unit in one building, in one lot, and it's, you know, not really splitting of creating any new lots, or roads, or whatever it is, you know, we're kind of forcing these people to come over here, you know, for several meetings, and with site plan, it could be two meetings, most likely it would, for larger projects, but, you know, it could potentially just be one, but most likely it would be two, like, with the concept plan. So that's kind of, you know, one difference, and the, the timing of the review, and how many times they have to come back here. They have-
That's the motivation, that's terrible.
Yeah.
I mean, both of them would be going through the project review board, right, so both of them would be, being reviewed by the same board, you know?
And there is something in, somewhere in our ordinance, right, that says that they, don't they have to be considered at the same meeting?
They can, yes, they can be considered at the same time.
But it can be, maybe that's what it is.
But the thing is that our subdivision ordinance is mostly designed for creating new lots, right? That's why we wanna pay attention to where you're organizing the lots, and we have all the open space requirements. It wasn't really designed for, you know, building a three-unit house somewhere in one lot, and, so-
Well, or even a thirty-unit building on one lot.
In one building.
Or two buildings on one lot, but you haven't subdivided the lot, really.
Nope.
Right.
The issue is, is the lot subdivided? If the lot isn't being subdivided-
Well, that's the main statue, so three or more units.
That defines a subdivision.
Yes, yes, that's why it's triggered, that's why it's triggered.
It's dwelling units, not structures. So I think, I mean, we could sort of, I mean, I could see a few different ways to do this. We could put a, we could add some additional constraints, right, like, we could say this applies to buildings under a certain size, or volume, or something like that.
Right.
Certain number of units, we could sort of, would it be, would, under the state rules, could we say, adopt the spirit of the state law for dwelling units and just apply it to structures? So like, what triggered, you know, three structures triggers sub, I mean, three dwelling units in a certain time period triggers subdivision now, right?
Yes.
Generally speaking, so if we said-
Or when that five unit-
Structures would trigger subdivision, so you could build two, is where I'm saying, where I'm going, under site plan review.
I mean that some-
Or, or a subdivision of a lot change, yeah.
Right, so-
Right, right, yeah.
I, I think we, I think we asked this question to the town attorneys before, when we were doing LD 2003, and she seemed, but we need some clarification. The way I read it, it's one newer existing structure, but it's possible that it could be more than, like, it could be in two structures, so we could ask clarification to that. But I guess the question is for you, the board, you know, like, do you think that if we did this, you know, are there any kind of, like, criteria that you would want to exempt some types of, you know, multifamily, I'm not gonna say development, because we define that, and, and allow them to just go through site plan, and allow, and make others go through subdivision? For instance, you know, allow them to go just to site plan if they're connected to water and sewer, or if it's, doesn't require a new road, or-
It's no road, water and sewer, it's those kinds of criteria that would make it seem silly.
It may be under the same ownership, too, yeah.
We don't really get into ownership, so-
Well, but if one guy owns the apartment house, and there's thirty units in it, you know?
But you can't really prevent somebody from making it into condos five years after they-
Well, they'd have to come back for subdivision for that.
Hmm, okay.
Right, because then they are actually subdivided.
That's right, then they're subdivided, the ownership. What'd you say, Carolyn?
There are some different requirements, you can submit some other legal docs if you're going into condos under something.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know if you can tie it to, this exempt, this finding, I don't know if you can tie it to ownership, we'll have to find out.
So the state says it's three or more dwellings, right? And they define dwellings as separate unit with separate facilities, and-
But we can make an exemption, and we can make an exemption however we wanted, what, what is the state rules about what we can or can't?
That's where, yeah, we're hearing that maybe we need some clarification, if we could do two buildings.
We might need some clarification if we can do two buildings, but I think most importantly is, you know, what does the planning board think would be, you know, appropriate to exempt? You know, is it one building with no new roads, is it one building up to eighteen units or twenty units?
I don't know why the sixty-five unit project on Depot Street had to go through subdivision, it's a site plan. I don't, I think it's, if there's-
Because of this lot, because of this rule.
Because of this rule, but I mean, if there's no roads-
So that's why we're here.
You have to worry about the site plan, and, and the site plan ordinance may not include some things that are in that subdivision ordinance that you might have to push in there to solve the problem.
Right, so-
But I hate the two steps when it's one building, or-
Because that was a building that they were building, right? So I think if you had a subdivision, and you're not putting, like, developing it, right, then you're just cutting the lots, and you're like, these are where the lots are gonna be, but as soon as you're building a large building like that, then you have to go through site plan. I mean, I think it's good to go through site-
Of course you could go through site plan.
But why subdivision?
But why subdivision?
No, I think-
That's why we're here today.
Yeah, so that's, so, so the sense I'm getting, at least from some members of the board, and I think I agree, that we almost don't need a cap on the, like, the cap on the dwelling units in a, like, that's already there, in, like, you can't put a sixty-unit in a rural residential zone, like, that-
Right, right, right.
You can't, cross tree. Is that a rural residential zone, or is that a-
No, I think that's commercial for us.
It's a commercial zone.
We did rezonate, but I don't remember what it was before, whatever, but I think it's, the, so from my perspective, I think it, it makes sense to not cap the size of the building, I think I like the road, like, not be changing or adding streets, I mean, that's pretty obvious, right?
To take that Depot Street, they were adding a road, but it's private, it was a driveway, really.
Yeah, I mean, and any, any construction project-
It's not really a road.
It's not a road, right.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna get plowed by the town plowed, right, so-
The minute you have a road by the town, oh my gosh, you need a-
Yeah, which, I think the town has a kind of a policy of not adopting your roads, right, so-
A tradition.
A tradition, sure, yeah. So, I, yeah, I mean, I, I would agree with, with the, the questions on the top page, buildings that are connected to public water and sewer, that one, I don't, you know, I kinda feel like if a, if a, if a septic permit can be pulled that meets the standards of, you know, the state subsurface wastewater, you know, requirements, then, okay, I mean, I'm not sure why it would have to be-
This could apply to a three unit, and also-
Yeah, I mean, you gotta put it in a three unit now, in a rural zone, and why do they have-
No, not in the rural zone, but maybe on the MD.
But also, like, I mean-
Well, actually, with LD, they could go to three now, yeah, if the slot is enough.
And if you can get, if you can get a septic system that is properly designed to work for fifteen bedrooms, then, okay, I mean, there's all kinds of regulations in place already that, that protect these sorts of-
It's plenty.
So, I, I don't really see it as strictly necessary to, to require that these buildings be connected to public water and sewer to bypass subdivision, if, in certain other situations. I do like that they don't require a new road, I think that one makes a lot of sense. I don't see the, it necessary to, to limit the number of units. I don't see the, it necessary to, to limit the number of units.
Should that be a new road, or a new public road?
New public road.
Okay.
I'm looking at all the stuff in the subdivision list, and trying to figure out, so let's just say we did this, and the buildings come along, and they don't have to go through that, what, what, what reviews are we now missing that we might regret?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things, like, for instance, you know, we might want to make it so regardless of the size, you know, they have to go through project review board review, and not just staff review board. Most likely it would, but other things, too, is, you know, whether we would always wanna require a concept plan, because it's, it says, you know, you should, but it doesn't say you shall, so it's not necessarily something that they would have to do. So that's something that we could, you know, change a little bit, the site plan, to make that a requirement. Another thing, too, is whether, you know, a, a legal public hearing is something that we would wanna do as well. So, right now, you know, pretty much, for both subdivision and site plan review, you know, they require, and sometimes may require, like, they all require pre-application, or may require, or it's not, it's kind of optional, pre-application conference. The public hearing, you know, that, that would be a may for the site plan, so it's not really mandatory, like it is for the subdivision. So if you wanted to require that, we could. A site walk is also usually optional, but we could also require that. We do a butter notification anyways, and then there's the concept plan, which we could require, 'cause right now it's not really mandatory.
That would make it two meetings at minimum, right?
Yes, but most often it is, if it, if the project, I think it's like two thousand square feet, or undeveloped land, or something like that.
I mean, the concept plan...
But I guess it's not, it's a shall, it's not, it's a should, but not shall, so we could require it, but we could also say that we want to reduce, you know, that's another part, where you could say, you know, if it's up to six units, you don't have to come for a, for a concept, but if it's sixty, maybe we do. I invited the project review board members to attend the meeting today, 'cause maybe it would be useful to get some of their feedback, since there are always reviewing days.
And who they all are?
I really like that idea.
So...
I feel like the project review board should weigh in.
They thought the agenda, but we just sent them a more personal invitation yesterday, so when we have draft language, we will invite them...
We should definitely...
...to participate, but I wanted to jump back on something Andy said.
Can we even bring it up at their meeting, so that they don't have to come to ours?
Yeah, well, if...
Make a presentation at theirs?
Yeah, I don't, if we have draft language, they'll look at it, if not, we can give feedback. I think you might get feedback on financial and technical capacity, because that's something that had come up to me before. I wanted to clarify something that Andy said, and something that Sam said. We talked about roads. So sub, the town of Freeport historically does not take new roads. Nobody wants to build to town road standards. It's big, it's complicated, and it's expensive. So all of these subdivision roads are private. We have no private road standards in Freeport, unless you come in for subdivision. So if you had a multifamily that needed to put in a road for frontage purposes, they would only get road design standards if they went through subdivision. Site plan has no road standards, it's only a driveway.
Can they get frontage off a driveway?
They cannot, because it would need to be in a right-of-way. The subdivision ordinance defines a driveway as serving two or fewer units. Anything above that, which this should also be reevaluated, needs to be designed as a subdivision road, which is typically eighteen and feet in width, two-foot gravel shoulders on either side, and a whole bunch of other things.
Your point is, we should...
So I just wanted to declare, I, well, I just wanted to clarify, the comment was made, oh, well, if they're doing a public road, but we don't, we don't, that's not our practice, so...
So, so it seems like one approach, then, would be, I mean, we could put like a...
I guess I...
Driveways over fifty feet in length should have to meet some private road standard, or subdivision you go.
So, we had a couple projects, we've had a couple projects come in. So we had a project on the corner, they had frontage on two town roads, they had a very short driveway that came off into a parking lot, we treated it, it was treated as a driveway. They didn't need frontage, they already had it. We had sixty-seven units that went on a corner lot, already had road frontage, so just called it a driveway serving the rear parking lot. We had another multifamily project that had a hundred and forty-four units and six buildings, and they had a, we'll call it, it was a road, they designed it to road standards with some waivers, because it was hundreds of feet in length. So you have a, a wide variety there.
The minute we're talking about a bunch of buildings, I don't think we should make any changes.
Yeah, so we have gotten conflicting legal information due to a conflict in the state law, so we've asked for clarification from the town attorney, if you can go into the buildings, or if their advice is you stick to projects with one building, which Andy gave an example of a thirty-unit project, that the building was too big, so the board said, hey, and the community said, divide it, make it smaller. This would have then bumped them into an entirely different process. The other thing we are waiting for some clarification on is how this impacts the new use of affordable housing developments, if they would also be subject to this provision, 'cause it's a different legal use than multifamily now, but we're gonna get that answer, too, of how you need to be addressing that.
So, a lot of towns, you know, have the site plan review for multifamilies, so like Brunswick is an example, and, you know, they do have, like, a requirement, so that if you're creating a private road, this is on their site plan, you know, to add something specifying property owners association for care and maintenance, a statement that the town will not accept the land, so we could look into adding a provision like that.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, like, if, if we did this, what would we miss? And could we add all those things back that we care? Could we get a list of all, and then decide what matters, and put those into the site plan?
In terms of, like, what do you feel you would be missing that you like from the subdivision requirements?
Correct.
Yes, for the approval requirements. Yeah, that's why you put these kind of notes together.
I really want the project review board's opinion.
But we also, I mean, I think that's a great point, and I totally agree with that. I just, the one thing to note is that this is site plan standards for everything, so any project that triggers a site plan review would then have these new standards.
Oh, couldn't it say, but a multifamily building has these additional requirements in their site plan?
Yeah, I guess you could, yeah.
And what kind of requirements are you thinking about?
The ones that we missed by, whichever ones are in that site plan that matter.
You mean the subdivision?
I mean, the subdivisions that matter, and, and, you know, some of them don't matter.
So like, for example, the financial capacity.
The financial capacity is a good example, but the, but a lot of these environmental impact stuff, other than what already exists under site plan, is not probably necessary.
Yeah, I feel like in subdivision, the environmental, if there's an environmental assessment component of subdivision, that is different. I'll tell you, when we've had a parking lot and a redevelopment in the village, it was a useless step, because they were developed, there were no, well, actually, there's some wetlands over there, but they don't have environmental constraints, like a wooded lot.
Right.
But you do get some more detail.
Now, let's say we're building a multifamily house on a wooded lot, a multifamily building, in a place where it's okay.
So we have one coming in to project review board. We have a multifamily, it's on a wooded lot, there's some easements, there's some steep slopes.
On a wooded lot.
On a wooded lot somewhere, pending application. There's a stream, like, so in that case, it's not in one of the VCs. So in that case, although this process isn't perfect, it does actually make a little more sense, because their first step is to do a land analysis, and make sure they're not going in the wetlands, a certain type, the steep slope, they have extra setbacks from those things. But in most cases, we're gonna see multifamily in the more developed areas.
Is that the next project review board meeting?
Another thing, too, is that, like, we, I mean, you could put, plop a warehouse or a factory on top of, you know, a wooded lot, without triggering the additional environmental constraints of, of the subdivision review, and, and therefore, you know, what is the impact, what's the difference?
Yeah, in a case like that, you'd probably trigger site location and stormwater permitting, where like, the multifamily structures are gonna have a smaller footprint.
And therefore, a smaller impact.
But I get her point, if you, what if you had two buildings? One has three, three units in it, and the other has, is a warehouse. Why would the three unit...
Cultivation, dispensary facility.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, so if you had a ten thousand square foot warehouse, they're not gonna show your site location.
Or a ten thousand square foot building with four units in it. What, what would be the, why would the four-unit building have to do something about the site that the ten thousand square foot building wouldn't?
That's something you guys could definitely look at. I think that was actually something flagged in the last comp plan to look at.
I mean, one of my first thoughts, reading through this, is like, what, what about a bulk standard, that sort of triggers subdivision? Like, if you say, if you say your building is less than X, you know, square feet of coverage, or if it's a certain, you know, some sort of size constraint on it, then you can go through site plan, and you don't have to trigger subdivision. But if it's a huge building with, like, massive, you know, stormwater implications or whatever, then, then maybe it should have to go through the more, you know, 'cause it, in some ways, it makes more sense to me, like, like, sort of taking the, the approach that we used when we developed the cannabis cultivation, land use stuff a few years ago, like, really, the things that, a lot of what matters for a lot of this is how it's perceived, how it sits on the land, like, how much impervious surface there is. So, I mean, yes, it matters how many people are living there, because it matters how many people are coming and going, and how many parkings, but...
Right, but you could be building like a office park, and have the same kind of impact.
Right, yeah, exactly, so...
But not trigger subdivision review.
So it, yeah, it's just an interesting way to look at it, I think.
Yeah, I think in a way, it's like looking at site plan, and seeing whether, you know, it's adequate, it does have, you know, stormwater criteria, like surface water drainage, it does have, you know, it's not like we're gonna allow somebody to build over wetlands, just because it's not triggering subdivision. There's like all that, you know, section, subsectional, environmental considerations.
Yeah, I wanted to go, 'cause that's pretty vague in your chart, but the...
Yes, I'm sorry that my...
It's a little more fleshed out in the, in the actual ordinance, right? So...
I tried to...
But it's all, I mean, a lot of these are pretty wishy-washy, right? Like, a lot of the considerations in the site plan, you know, I mean, parking and circulation, the layout and design of all means of vehicle and pedestrian circulation, including walkways, interior drives, parking areas, shall be safe and convenient, and, insofar as practical, shall not detract from the proposed building and neighboring properties, like, in whose opinion, right? I mean...
Well, you have a whole ordinance full of performance standards that go into details that are tied to that, you know, for parking lot layout, and width, and angles, and all of that stuff. I think that's...
Yeah, no, I know.
The subdivision's more prescriptive, again, to make the finding, you have a very short list of standards that you need to do that on. I, I do think, my opinion, it would be that subdivision's more strict on the environmentally sensitive areas, because if you have wetlands of a certain type, you need a setback, you know? Otherwise, you can get a permit from DEP, and you can fill them, or the steep slopes, like, that's not really something we get into, twenty percent steep slopes, you know? I have that admired, and you don't wanna plunk a building on it. You know, so subdivision does look at that, but again, multifamily, you have restrictive zones that you allow that in, and we know, Freeport historically does not have a lot of multifamily, so we really are talking about a limited number of applications in this case. We hope we'll see more coming in under this, but we haven't yet.
Steep slopes, you mentioned, so steep slopes is not part of the site? I thought a steep slope was automatically deducted from the buildable area for...
That's only if you're in subdivision. So subdivision, you look at your land, you calculate your net residential acreage, and then you figure out how many units you can get. You don't do that in site plan. You take your acreage, and you divide it by the land per dwelling area, so if you don't have deductions, you could get probably more units.
Yep.
And I can think of one, two, you know, the three I can think of off the top of my head in the village, four. There's one that's had a lot of wetlands, we have a parcel, that's before the project review board right now, and it's really, it has a ton of wetland, but two other ones, I've seen very small pockets of wetland, it hasn't really resulted in a change for the number of units.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I mean, the steep slopes one is interesting, if that could be brought over, too.
I mean, there is an erosion and sedimentation, which, I guess, if you're in a steep slope, you have to show how you aren't gonna keep that from eroding, if you develop it, right?
That seems super important, but...
But that's a big...
But the other one doesn't seem important. Why would, why would your density be reduced if you have a steep slope?
Because we, we have environmentally sensitive areas that the subdivision ordinance deems not buildable, or wanting to protect, so you take those out of the buildable land, and they get put in, in most cases, into open space and permanently protected. If you don't have those, it's irrelevant.
But I'm, I agree with that, you wanna take that land and put it permanently protected, but now I'm wondering, but since you did that, why can't you get more density over here?
Right, because they're saying, that's land that's not buildable, so it's land area you don't have to work with, essentially.
But that's, the second half of that sentence is what I didn't understand. I get you can't build on it, but I don't understand why the...
Why can't you, why can't you credit it towards...
Why can't you credit towards your density?
That's just the way it works, you can't.
Yeah, no, it's an interesting question. I mean, I think the theory is, it probably has to do with runoff, right? I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna build a denser thing over here, right next to the steep slope, and you're gonna be dumping them on...
It might not affect the steep slope, it may, and it...
But it's, I mean...
Well, we don't have any density limits in downtown, anyway.
You don't, but this would apply to all multifamily.
We do have density limit downtown, we do not have density limit under VC one district, but you have to look at the, the downtown isn't just the VC one district, it's, you know, the area around it, so we do have some quite restrictive density requirements on the rest of downtown that is not VC one.
That's a big one to flag, too, but...
Which is, yeah, yeah, that's a...
I mean, yeah, back to the, it's a housing concept.
But it's all kind of related with the housing, yeah, so...
Okay, so, all right, I'm trying to sort of figure out, how do, how do, how do we move this forward? Other, so what, so what sort of big takeaways do we have so far?
Like, would you want to require public hearings for these? Like, always have it trigger it? Would you want to always have it trigger site plan and concept plan?
Now, a subdivision automatically triggers?
Does not automatically trigger.
Public hearing, it does, right?
So let's just clarify, the, the project review board functions a lot like the planning board, their practice is to always take public comment. A public hearing is a legally defined thing, where we circulate the agenda, we run a legal ad, they open and close it, and it kind of guarantees the opportunity that we're gonna have that under site plan. It's optional now, in most...
Under subdivision, it's automatic?
Under state law, it's required. So if you have, like Sam was saying, if you have a multifamily coming now, you, they go through site plan and subdivision, we do it at the same time. Most of the standards overlap, for example, one standard that doesn't overlap would be, like, the parking requirement, we look at that in site plan, we don't look at it really in the same way in subdivision. But they overlap, so if we're doing a public hearing, you just do a public hearing on everything. So I think that's part of the reason the project review board hasn't really utilized that public hearing, because in a big design review project, or a big subdivision project, it's mandatory already.
My inclination would be to sort of add a sub, like a subsection, right, to add, certain projects can skip subdivision, under cer, you know, if they meet certain thresholds, and then, under that same...
They have to do these.
But they have to do these other things, like, I think a public hearing should be required for a site plan. I don't think a site walk should be required. These are just my gut reactions, but I think, like, I think we should require a public hearing for a project that's big enough that it previously would have had to go through subdivision, and now we're trying to, we're trying, we're still streamlining the process, but I think, at least for now, I think it makes sense to keep that.
A three-unit house will have to have a public hearing.
Really, it's just a legal ad, and it's a requirement that you know they're gonna have it, and it's an additional fee to the developer.
And to us, well, it's two hundred and fifty dollars to publish it, right?
It depends on what the ad is, the variable cost.
Do you mail, would there be any mailing associated with it?
We do, a butter notification already, five hundred, we upped it for site plan, project review board's site plan, so it's five hundred feet, which is what it is for subdivision, which actually picks up a lot of people in the village. That's already, regardless of the public hearing, we already do that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so maybe, I guess that is a lot of my sort of butter notification.
Yeah, the butter notification.
That's more, I guess, more what I'm thinking of, when I think about, like...
It's probably even more useful to have the butter notification, because when we do the public hearing ad, it's like this tiny little ad in the Times Record, which I don't know, you know, I think it's been identified that a lot of people don't read that, or don't come across that.
I mean, though, if you don't require a public hearing, I guess they could do something without any public comment.
That's where I was just thinking, is like, what if then, what if you have a bunch of butters show up, and the project review board's having a bad night, and they're like, thanks for coming, and they just...
We mailed you a notice, but we don't really wanna hear from you.
So, so I guess I...
That might be something that would be more helpful, to have the project review board weigh in on, potentially?
Yeah, but, and I totally, I, I want the project review board's input a hundred and ten percent on this, but that particular piece of input would be this particular project review board saying, of course, we're gonna listen, and it could be totally different in five years.
Exactly, yeah, it would be.
So that, that particular one I see as being maybe, I, I come back to, I like the fact that the notification is there, I also think we should require a public hearing.
That's doable.
Not so much for the, not so much for the ad, but for the requirement that they listen, the project review board listen to people in the room.
Yep, so currently it would require an ad, which is fine.
Which, yeah, I mean, this is the same, the same me that is often on the record saying, "It's all these loud people in the room that get the most," you know, so...
But that's the way democracy works.
That is the way, that is the way it works generally, I think, as long as...
So am I hearing that, you know, we do want to keep the public hearing as a requirement? We don't want to require site plan if the project review board doesn't think that's necessary, I mean, a site walk?
Site walk, yeah. I would agree with that.
Not necessary.
I also think the concept plan is an interesting one, I would love to get the PRB's feedback on that. I just feel like the concept plan can save, I mean, I don't know if it needs to be required, I think most good developers would know.
Yeah, it seems dumb not to do it.
Yeah, like, it, it's just smart to bring in your, and say like, "Hey, what do you guys think about, like, am I going in the right direction? Should I," before you go through and you detail, you know, you spend tens of thousands of dollars of engineering and whatever else, time detailing everything, only to then have them say, "Well, actually, you need to change this, 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 this."
I agree with you on the site walk, I would have, so, you know, it's up to the board, and so the project review board has set site walks, that if I got to pick, I wouldn't have set a site walk, right? But that's up to the seven people on the board at that time. I think there's times where they might not want to do it, if it's a piece of land everyone knows. I'll tell you right now, partially because design review, we did a site walk for both of the two recent downtown housing projects at the board's discretion, and what was the other thing you just mentioned? The site walk and, oh, the concept, I, yeah, I fully agree with you on that. There are people that will want to come in, if someone's doing a multifamily, three-unit, like, in an existing building, I hate to make them come in for a concept if they're not changing, so I do...
Fair enough, yeah, it's maybe, maybe it's like buyer beware type of situation.
And you're right, if you're doing 100 units and all this engineering and you don't want to do that concept, that's up to you, the board might not take action.
Yeah.
So, so we'd make concept plan requirement, should we add, okay?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, that, that makes sense to me, to, to leave that as optional, leave the site walk as optional, and then make the public hearing a requirement.
Okay, and we also do not, you know, buildings that would require a new public road would not be eligible for site plan review and would have to go through subdivision review.
We decided public road was not helpful, right?
Public road's not helpful.
Yeah, I think...
How would you define the road that they...
If they were, I think, so, we would draft language and want the code officers to look at it, we have two now, to make sure that they're interpreting it as we write it, but I would probably do something like, if they require, like, if they don't require a road for frontage purposes or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, would, would it be useful, do you think, to have like a length, like under 50 feet? 50 feet or whatever, or is that...
Yeah, we could see if we could do, we could see if we could do a length, you know, you can have long driveways. I guess there's ways around it, too. For example, we had a project over here, they came in over an existing driveway. If that was too long, they would just switch it into a curb cut somewhere else to bypass the process. So you could, I think you could put, I, my only concern is I kind of feel like we'd be baking up a number for that, but we, we could tie it to that, I think, potentially.
Just put the question out, I mean, yeah, I don't feel like I certainly have the...
I think for me personally, like, the road's the biggest thing because we don't have private road standards. So if you're doing a new road and someone's going in, and we know that we, as a town, are not really probably ever gonna take that over, having no standard is somewhat concerning to me for the future buyers.
Yep. Yep. So is there a way to add a road standard?
I think there is for the site plan, like Brunswick, I think, has that.
We, yeah, so we flagged private roads as an issue in Freeport, we have subdivision road standards, we have town road standards, we have driveway standards, we have state road standards, and they all conflict. So we have flagged roads standards in Freeport as a bigger issue that we need to better look at, better aligning. So I think that would be, we could create private roo, we could create private road standards right now. I think it would probably bog this down and warrant some additional conversation, which is fi, which is fine, we could do that now, but that wasn't the top thing on the...
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fair.
That might even be something that when we're looking at our road standards, when we're considering, like, low-impact development, which basically means, you know, building to not cause so much impervious surfaces so that we have, we don't create so much stormwater issues, too.
Right.
I think if you, at some point, if you do more ordinance cleanup across the board, which just isn't under your purview, other ordinances, too, this would be something that you would potentially want to revisit, this standard, because if we did have private road standards, you might strike this at that time.
But maybe for now, we could add something so that if they build a road, that there's at least some kind of, you know, homeowners agreement in terms of maintenance.
But you talked about not building roads.
Any road.
We talked about pushing it to subdivision standards if there is a certain type of road.
Yes, yes.
But we haven't, I think, identified exactly what type of road would trigger in the board's mind. That, that, that might be a great thing to get feedback from the PRB on, too, I mean, just because they've seen so many more of these projects, where it's like, "Hey, this issue's come up on this type of project, over here, we felt this way about it because X, Y, and Z." They might have that perspective that we don't have. So, okay, so how do we move that forward, then? If they, if we need PRB to wait, I mean, can you guys draft some standards and then we bring them to the...
Yeah, so there's changes that will need, be, need to made throughout the ordinance that Cecilia will work on drafting. I can have a conversation with PRB at a high level, even if we don't have that language at their next meeting later this month, if there's things they think we should be aware of. If, I, I think we can see what they flag, if they flag things that we feel like need to be addressed, and I don't know that, we might want to have another revisit of this. If they don't flag anything, then I don't know if you'd want to just go to public hearing or if you, you might, I guess, you might want to see the language.
I think we need to see the language. I don't, I think it's, given that this is a slightly, this is in that sort of middle category, it's not addressing a really specific need, but I think it's important to get it done relatively quickly, but it's not like a slow-burn project either. I think, I think it's, I would like to have that step where we put, do you feel like, let me step back for one second, do you feel like, Cecilia, you have enough to draft some ordinance language based on the discussion tonight, even though we haven't dived into every specific point? I feel like this might be one of those, one of those processes where we need to actually see something to react to it, to start to, it might be like an iterative process versus, versus like nailing down every detail and then just drafting it and being done. It may be the situation where we have some general ideas, we don't really have the technical expertise to make every decision right now, it's getting late, but if we have, if you have a general sense of how the board feels, hopefully, then we can draft some language, we can get the PRB's feedback, we can bring it back to this board for another discussion, and then we can do, go to public hearing, hopefully, after that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, I mean, I feel like Cecilia and I could give you language tomorrow, and what needs to change to make this happen? For example, we have cases where it references multifamily going through subdivision, like, that needs to be changed. I didn't hear from you real clearly what, if any, performance standards of 602, of the required ones you want changed, or what you need to be able to better evaluate that.
I think there was a lot of, like, let's see what the PRB thinks on that.
I'm getting a sense of that, too.
So, I think the, we, you know, we went through a couple with the...
Okay.
...public hearing and the notification and all that, but I think, otherwise, let's see what the PRB thinks about that.
Okay, on those required standards.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you've done a lot of work here in sort of showing...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sorry that it's formatted and not maybe the easiest, I didn't know how else to make it simple.
It mostly shows that most of what you want is in 602.
Right, and another thing, too, that I didn't include there is, because over there I just included 602 standards, but there is a rest of the zoning ordinance, right? We do have, you know, another section of the, of the zoning ordinance such as for stormwater, another one for wastewater, another one for pollution, another, you know, there's several other sections of the zoning ordinance that kind of reinforce site plan, so that I don't, I'm personally not concerned about this change personally, except for, you know, we, we want to carefully look at it when we're doing, get the feedback from the project review board to see if we're not missing anything, but I feel that what's good enough for, you know, a giant warehouse is good enough for an apartment building in terms of impact to the environment, you're not really splitting, creating new lots and doing that cluster, you know, open space subdivision, which is, I think, what our subdivision ordinance kind of really was designed for.
And it seems like the legal guidance seems to be trending towards stick to one building.
It's interesting that...
I have thought about this, two buildings, and had this thought that maybe when it went from one to two, it triggers it indeed, because it's simple to just talk about one building.
They could have added, like, a walkway from one building to the other one, and it would have been technically one building, right?
True, yeah, I'm actually going through that on a project right now in a different municipality.
Yeah, they could have substantially constructed them.
Yeah, they want a guest house, but there's, it's actually a deed restriction, which is interesting, but anyway, the, yeah.
Yeah, so we do have, in the rest of the zoning ordinance, you know, we have Section 201 that has sanitary and potable water standards that apply to any new unit, there's Section 508, which is sanitary standards, we have 512, access to property, we have Section 522, water quality protection, 523, groundwater protection, and then 529, stormwater. So those are all kind of, you know, buffering the existing 602.
I do think, so, the subdivision standards are more strict with wells and septics. I think it would be pretty unlikely that you see a lot of multifamily developments on wells and septics, so, although we have some minor standards for potable water and waste in subdivision, we act, you actually have a stricter standard for septic design and subdivision for the concentration of nitrates at the property line, and we have different hydrogeologic assessments that the board often requires, but in the, we're just talking about multifamily, and I think it would be pretty rare that we have such a high density, so I think you would have some less vague standards that would be adequate.
Or we could add those standards in, too, if you think they are necessary.
I guess I'm not, so, yeah, I think it's probably gonna be okay, the way it is.
I mean, we just had 80 units and 40 septics go in.
And what?
So it can be done, but it's pretty rare.
You had what?
But they're in duplexes.
80 units and 40 septics.
But they're in 40 different buildings, right?
Yeah, they're in different buildings, but we don't, we don't typically see so many units with septics, was my point, like, it's pretty rare because there's so much involved in it. Did you guys talk about the density, Cecilia, when I stepped out?
No, no. So, I, usually, you know, we have, we designed a subdivision ordinance, and then we added all these open space into each, pretty much each district, right, for subdivisions. I think in line, the feeling I get is that when you're, you're calculating, they have to calculate that net residential acreage, and to that, they have to subtract things like the steep slope, the wetlands, I don't, I, I've never really reviewed these and throughout time, so I don't know what percentage of them never gets anything deducted and have, or just a clean, you know, lot. So it often turns out that I think that with the net residential acreage calculation, even though it requires for subdivision, for open space subdivision, it requires, you know, less land per unit, you do have to set some land aside for conservation, and it's possible that depending on the lot, you could have a situation where, you know, if it had been going through subdivision, they could fit more units in, and you could have some lots that would be vice versa. I think that in a situation that we find that, that we want more units in certain districts, and I think the way to deal with that is not through this vehicle, but to fixing the density on that district. But I think we wanted to point out that it is possible that you could, you know, somebody could be in a lot that they would be now able to develop less because with the regular standard, you know, it could be...
You're saying the, the applicant should be able to opt into subdivision if he wants to?
I don't think that's gonna be an option.
More just, so, in a lot of zones, like in C3, C1, All Route 1 South, this isn't, this doesn't really matter, it's irrelevant, because we have no subdivision and outside of subdivision, it's universal. But in some of the Village Commercial in particular, where we have the Village Open Space Subdivision, which is probably something we'll talk about during the comp plan, we just want you to be aware that in some cases, in particular, if they have no deductions, they could actually potentially get less units by going just to site plan and out of subdivision. We looked at a couple scenarios, it's really, it's really gonna be mixed, there's really not a great way to predict it, but just, just be aware of that, but, you know, I think we'll be having density conversations as we go through.
There's no way to give somebody an opt-out?
No. You're making this finding and setting the path forward for them. I mean, we haven't really seen a lot of those Village Open Space Subdivisions, I think I've seen two in 20 years, so I don't think it's a huge issue, but just to be transparent, just so you understand of the decisions you're making.
Yeah, no, I think it's interesting, I, I feel like trying to, excuse me, address that would be potentially contagious. Baby out with bathwater, you know what I mean, like, if we try to fix that, then we're stopping.
Yeah, you'll have density conversations anyway, so I'm not super concerned, but just to make sure you guys are aware.
Okay. No, I think that's, yeah, that's interesting. Yep, fix the underlying density, I like that.
That's what, that's the route I would take, yeah.
So, all right, anyone wishing to address the board on non-agenda items?
Well, I, I understand two things about your decision.
Could you please go over to the podium, so, thank you. And sorry, I'm just like trying to be mindful of the people.
You're right, I just wanted to get clear about what the decision was in terms of asking a, an opinion from the PRB, and then, second, are you asking Cecilia to send you a new draft of this?
There, yes, there would be a draft of this that would come, that would come out, and I think that the planning board would, would hope to get feedback from the project review board on submission requirements and...
But how, how, how would that happen? How, how do you guys ask?
It's the order, so if we, I mean, it seems to me we first want to hear a little bit from the planning board about what concerns, if any, I mean, from the project review board. And then, and so I think Travis is asking, like, how are you gonna write something if we haven't gotten the feedback, and if we do get the feedback, then shouldn't we talk about the feedback before you write something?
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to talk to the, you know, get some opinions before dra, but, I mean, we could get started on drafting and...
Yeah, I also heard from Caroline, though, that a lot of the work to draft it is fairly straightforward, right, to put the, put the process in motion, so...
Yeah, depending what you guys want to see for standard changes, a lot of it's gonna be, but I would see, sorry, I would see having a high-level conversation with the project review board at their meeting later this month.
Right, I think that's the first, that's, that's the critical first step, is try to go to the project review board meeting and get some feedback from them at their next public meeting.
And if they, if they, if, if they have something substantial, that has to be considered.
It's just gonna be, yeah, oh, absolutely, I think it's just gonna be a little bit of an iterative process, and we're just gonna have to see...
Yeah, so what probably...
...how we feel about a draft. I think there's gonna be at least one more planning board public discussion about this before it goes to public hearing, so...
If nothing, like, shocking or huge comes out, I would see us bringing you back a draft to talk about. We can invite them to that meeting, your meeting.
Yep, but if something shocking comes out, then we probably have to talk about it before you waste much time.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, did that answer the question?
So we're probably looking three meetings down the line to finally have some official amendment language, public hearing.
To have the, yeah, yeah, hopefully, yep, sure. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, wow, that was fast. We do have to do a roll call, unfortunately, but, Dave?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Mitch?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, we're going to adjourn.
Next week.